Eureka City Council Meeting, today is April 2nd and we're glad you're all here. It's nice to see everybody. We will open this meeting with the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jerojigi. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And do we have a report out of closed session?
Good evening, Mayor. No report out of closed session tonight.
Thank you. If we could do a roll call, please.
Mayor Burgel.
Here.
Councilmember Castellano is absent. Councilmember Moulton.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Here.
Okay, and if all who would care to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. So, we'll start with our first, or our proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, if you want to come on up. And we have Councilmember Moulton reading that into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to our guest. City of Eureka Proclamation and Recognition of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2024. Whereas sexual assault affects children, youth, adults, and elders of all genders, from all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, with public health and social justice implications for every person in Eureka. And whereas, staff and volunteers of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team provide 24-hour services to survivors and their significant others, and encourages every person to end sexualized violence by providing prevention education and awareness-raising programs throughout Humboldt and Delmarque Counties. And whereas, no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, but can, through collaboration and partnership, work together to support those impacted, improve responses, and ensure that survivors are not re-victimized. Now therefore, I, Katie Moulton, on behalf of Kim Burgel and the Eureka City Council, reaffirm our commitment to the North Coast Rape Crisis Team and holding to our values of heal, help meet survivors where they're at, empower them in their healing journeys, affirm their choices, and listen to their stories, and acknowledges April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Thank you again for your continued support of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team and for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Our 10 staff and eight volunteers assisted 479 survivors of sexualized violence in Humboldt County last year. We answered 1,228 crisis calls 24 hours a day, 365 days out of the year. And our services are at risk. We have been told by the federal government that our Victims of Crime Act funding is going to be cut anywhere between 30% and 60% beginning October 1. And we are committed to continue to do the work, but we need help. We need businesses and people and grants to come in, in order to keep our services alive. This is a cut not just to the North Coast Rape Crisis Team, but also to anyone who gets FOCA funding, so Humboldt Domestic Services, Indigenous Violence Services, Victim Witness, and lots of other first responding services. And so, we will be doing active fundraising. Please check our website. Every month, we are going to be doing active fundraising. We are trying to grant, write our way out of this. And we are committed to keeping our 24/7 services in order that no survivor and no family is alone in their healing journey. But our services are at risk for one of the very first times. And so, thank you for your continued commitment to us, because we're going to need it.
Thank you. I appreciate your work. It's despicable that that is being cut, in my opinion, so I just really appreciate all you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to Mayor's reports. Excuse me a minute here. Today I thought I would, I spoke at, it was Senator Michael McGuire had a town hall and Councilmember Supervisor Arroyo and myself were there to discuss a few things about our city and our region. And I just wanted to highlight the Measure H program. I really appreciate all the voters who voted for that, and I want to read to you some of the benefits that we have reaped from that, which is pretty exciting. So, with the Eureka Police Department, they've had the best contract EPD has seen in more than a decade. So, they've had side letters for shift differential pay. This is important stuff to read it off, so I'm going to. Received take-home vehicles, added positions. They have 3% retention pay immediately, 5% cost of living increase as of July 1st, two consecutive 3% COLAs 2025 and 26. And they have included longevity, 5% for five years, 6% for 10 years, and contributed 3% into their retirement immediately. So, an officer who has been at EPD for 10 years, their total pay increase will be around 17%, which is exciting. That's well-deserved. Public works, since the passage of Measure H, over $7.5 million has been spent on streets. So, since the pass, oh, because of the deferred maintenance that's been happening for decades, we got kind of behind. So, we would put approximately $0.5 million from the general fund to roadwork for the last 15 years, prior to Measure H. Next year, this is exciting, over $2.5 million Measure H dollars are going to roads, as we have spent each year since the passage of Measure H. And we're going to be discussing the capital improvement plan tonight. We're on a pothole blitz. Last, last week, last two weeks, 36 tons of asphalt has been laid with hot patches, and it's continuing to happen. During the rainy season, we use cold patches, but they don't last as long, so we get a lot more work done when it's nice out. And if you have any questions or potholes you'd like to talk about, it's by priority. The number is 707-441-4194. And then, economic development. So, before Measure H, we had one half-time employee. Since Measure H, we have four full-time employees solely dedicated to economic development and added temp employees that work in our visitor center. We've developed two grant programs for our businesses, $5,000 for facade and safety improvements, and have granted thousands of dollars toward local business. Because of Measure H, programs like Uplift Eureka, Phenomenal Program, CAPE, Community Access Program Eureka, and CARE, our Critical Alternative Response Team of Eureka, are now a part of our general fund. These support local youth, seniors, and homeless families and individuals. Community services, 33% increase in staffing. Improvements at Carson Park provided new basketball courts, new restrooms in partnership with Old Town Rotary, and soon-to-be new playground equipment. Highland Park, new tennis and pickleball courts, all-new fencing, all-walkway rehab, brand-new restroom and concession building, and new playground equipment will be coming, and the goal is to be done by this summer. The Beta Zoo Trail of the approximately $36 million that has gone towards the projects I've mentioned above, $1 million of that went to the Beta Zoo Trail project. That $1 million leveraged another $10 million to make that project whole. Finance advisory committees were always intended to be the advisory committee for Measure H, and annual reports on Measure H happen once a year. This will occur this year and will be reported to council at budget time, as it has been presented every other year of Measure H. The finance advisory meeting is noticed and open to the public, just like all of our committee meetings, so you're welcome to attend. And then lastly, housing. I just want to throw this in, because we've got a lot of projects happening. So, we've got the Link Project, and that's pending. Good news about that project will be reporting soon. We're just waiting for tax credits, then the project will be fully funded. Working with the Wiat, we met yesterday, and that project's, those projects are moving forward. The Earth Center, we're working with HTA and a third party, coming back to council in a month or two. And then rural communities will be having a public meeting in the summer to discuss the Sunset Heights property off Fairfield. So, there's a lot of amazing, amazing things happening in our city. Thank you voters who passed Measure H, so we could, you know, really start to dive into solutions for our community. I just really appreciate that. And I just wanted to say that I also got to go out to the Wind Energy meeting on Friday, just trying to really learn a lot of information about what's happening with that, as well as I got to go to the Sons of Italy dinner and meet Evo Fanuqui, who is 103 and will be the grand marshal of the Rhododendron Parade. And just a little FYI sidebar, Evo Fanuqui was in a movie in 1943 called The Fighting Seabees with John Wayne, and I actually watched the movie. It's kind of a little violent, but I found him. I think I found him. So, I love where we live, you guys, I just do. So, with that, we're going to move on to, is it the consent calendar? No, the public comment period, I'm sorry. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. In pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to comment? Come on up. Welcome.
My name is Phyllis Coy. First of all, thank you for beginning the daunting work of pothole repair around the city of Eureka. Hopefully, you will also begin repairing the awful cracks in the sidewalks in Old Town. It would be awful for a tourist to have an accident caused as a result of these cracks. I noticed a severe crack at Sequoia Park has been painted orange, though not recently painted. However, at the corner of the south entrance to the playground, the yellow bump strips have not been addressed. Perhaps the cracks around Old Town could also be painted to alert people. And speaking of Sequoia Park, please ask the maintenance crew to put soap in the women's restroom. As of Monday late morning, the soap packet has been taken out of the dispenser. No need to check to the men's room, it has soap. Thank you for, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, on Zoom we have Shannon Townsend.
Hi there.
Hi, welcome. Yeah.
Thank you for taking my call. Like you, Kim, I love Eureka. So, I thank everyone of you on the dais for all that you do for our community. I'm here to speak about global affairs. I hear that there may be some more, there might be public interest in passing a ceasefire resolution six months into this war. I just, I just feel like I need my community to say that this is not okay. And I talk to several members of our community, I talk to community members every day, and they are affected by it as well. We have several members of our community who are Palestinian-American, who are very affected by it as well. And I do think that this issue affects us locally. For example, right now, there's a protest every Friday against the war in Gaza. It's not even really a war, it's basically an assault on a defenseless group of people. And I participate in those protests sometimes, not always, but there's a good turnout. And I really would recommend that you guys come to it, to see this in person. People are really upset about what's happening, it does affect us. And there's someone within our law enforcement agency who continues to harass and intimidate the protesters. This is someone from the highest office of law enforcement, the District Attorney's Office. And they exhibit bizarre behavior. Word on the street is that they carry guns, they have a concealed carry permit, it is harassment, it is threatening. There is, I hear, an internal investigation into this person, thankfully and hopefully they will be held responsible. But this is just one example of how this global issue is affecting us here locally. And we see the flag of this foreign nation that's committing genocide. Every day, it's, it's in the Superior Court window facing 4th Street, right above the sheriff's office. What kind of message does that send to the people of Humboldt County and the people of Eureka about the law enforcement in our county? It is shameful, it is disgraceful, and it's against the law and against county policy, but it still remains. I'm told that they're handling it. Anyways, I don't want to take up too much of your time, I'm just hopeful that we can get a ceasefire resolution on the agenda with the city of Eureka in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. And I see a phone number up there, but I can't see the numbers.
Phone number ending in 2841.
Good evening. As of last update in December of 2023, the finance advisory committee duties are to advise the city council on matters pertaining to the state of city finances, and may be called on by city council to review, analyze, and recommend improvements or resolutions to problems in the areas of financial planning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Judy.
The committee, the committee will review the draft city budget as prepared by the manager for presentation to the council. They may recommend changes in policy regarding revenue generation, collection, investment, budgeting, general or capital expenditures, et cetera. They may recommend privatization or consolidation or other means of cost-saving and higher efficiency. C, this committee will, from time to time, assist in the selection of city auditors, review the scope, content, and timing of audits of city funds, and the efficiency of the process, and review and comment on recommendations and problems identified by the auditor in the audit report and management letter. D, the committee will act as the oversight committee for the supplemental transactional use tax, but from the ordinance, Section 35.191, fiscal accountability provisions. Consistent with Eureka's value to be transparent, a citizens oversight committee has been established to conduct annual audits for all expenditures or revenues generated by the tax to ensure fiscal accountability and public participation. The oversight committee may be the city's existing financial advisory committee. Note "may be," not "will be" or "shall be." I believe you understand from what we've just read, this is not robust accountability, nor is it transparent. On the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration website, they found a tool that shows how much taxable sales occurred within the city boundaries. In 2022, that was almost a billion with AB dollars, in 2023 somewhat less. 2022 income from Measure H dollars would have been approximately $12 million. What is currently being collected is 1.25% Measure H. It is not .5 Measure O and some more from Measure H. You may be collecting residual back taxes from Measures O and Q, and they would be in addition to the 1.25 Measure H tax. The phrase "general tax" does not appear in the ballot question ordinance or resolution. The intent of Measure H was clear and is not being followed. Given that the duties of the finance advisory committee are at odds with Section 35.191 of the ordinance, I once again call on you to create an independent citizens committee for auditing, overseeing, and publicizing Measure H income and expenditures to achieve transparency. Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Judy. Adina, welcome.
Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing the public to participate in these meetings remotely. I had a question, and I understand you can't speak to my inquiry under the Brown Act, but I was looking at statements of economic interest, and I did see that Mr. Fernandez has a parcel that is assessed at a value of approximately $1 million. So, I was just trying to confirm if that was a personal residence or a business entity. And secondly, I'd like to echo the comments made by the woman who was all for a ceasefire, because there are innocent lives being shed, and it's unfortunate to see these political narratives, especially within the Democratic Party. I see a lot of people leaving the party for that reason, and I am a follower of Price, so I believe in sparing lives on both sides, because there are innocent civilians. And it's unfortunate to see individuals such as our current incumbent Congressman Jared Huffman, who are funded by the Zionists, for example, J Street PAC, and therefore, they don't want to talk about a ceasefire resolution, because everything is entirely about money. And I'm seeing this primarily driven through the charitable sector, which is why I am, you know, involved in auditing matters within the city of Eureka. So, I very much appreciate your time, thank you so much.
Thanks for being here. Do you see anybody else on Zoom?
I see no one else on Zoom.
Is there anybody, one last time, in the public who'd like to speak in public comment? Welcome.
Good evening. Just briefly, there's a new vehicle I'm not sure you're aware of that's extremely dangerous in the city of Eureka and probably all over the country. It's a new type of scooter, two-wheel, two-powered electric scooter that's capable of doing 50 miles an hour. I witnessed this myself. Actually, it was going faster than the speed limit on F Street in full black gear with full helmet. These people, if they hit someone, or vehicle, whatever, they'll kill them. So, these types of vehicles should be illegal or special licenses. They like these vehicles, because they can ride on trails very well, and on trails, they make even more unsafe for people using the trails on bicycles or walking. So, before someone's killed, unfortunately in Humboldt County, that's the criteria, somebody has to die. Oh my gosh, we have to do something. In Anola, 20-some years, okay? Unbelievable. Caltrans waited over 20 years to fix the most dangerous intersection in Humboldt County, okay? So, let's not wait for somebody to die. I have a picture, I can tell you the company after I, it's on my phone, I turned my phone off. Anyway, we need to be aware of this. They're silent, so you won't hear them. And the last time I saw one was near the high school, where you have kids going and coming from school. Okay? And this guy was kind of oblivious to, oh my gosh, I guess I shouldn't be riding this here. No kidding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have a few more.
Oh, Patty.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, welcome.
Okay, sorry, there's a little bit of a delay before, between a couple different broadcasts. Anyway, I, I want to kind of reiterate what the gentleman just talked about. Like, what is the plan for enforcement for our community? Just today, I witnessed a guy doing laps around Washington School on his bike, ripping through every stop sign. I actually hollered at him, I said, hey, isn't the stop sign there? But, you know, he's probably doing a good 30 miles an hour, getting his exercise on his bike, and completely disregarding any laws that should be enforced. There's constantly scooters in the bike lanes and e-bikes, so, you know, with the big push on all these new bike paths through town, I have heard your Transportation Commission say zero about enforcement, and I think we all need to start talking about that. You know, obviously, more people are going to get on their bikes and ride, but if they're just going to be ripping out in front of us and doing loop-de-loops at 50 miles an hour around the park, we're going to have a problem. I also wanted to remind you guys about the Citizens of Eureka survey, which was a survey done with specifically Eureka citizens. Do you ride any form of bike as your transportation? 96% said no. Would you ride a bike as your primary transportation? 90% said no. I'm going to keep reminding you guys about that survey and the real numbers in our community as we move forward to these bike paths, because what I'm seeing at your Transportation Commission level, there's not a lot of real knowledge happening there. It's a dream pipe of getting the grants and what they want to see done, but they are not looking out for the community, and I hope that you, as city council members, will do that. Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Patty. And there's another phone number. I can't see it.
Give me one moment.
We already did that one?
No. Phone number ending in 9781.
Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi. Thank you. This is Roy Gomez. I've been a business owner in the city of Eureka for over 20 years, and I wanted to applaud the city of Eureka and Eureka Main Street for hosting the event at the Warfinger that, after business owners voiced concerns over safety issues and different safety scenarios that needed to be addressed, and I think that it was really, really good that the city took the time to speak to, you know, to speak to the people that are in the trenches and dealing with certain issues. I really appreciated Officer LeFranc informing everybody, and of course Jacob also, on the fact that Old Town business owners are exhausted with a lot of the different, you know, crime and homelessness and different instability that has come with the defunding their police department, and obviously, you know, we have council members that are in favor of abolishing the police, like Mario is. So, you know, a slow bleed is better than a complete bleed-out, I guess. So, I do really appreciate that the city took the time to hear all of us business owners, and, you know, we are definitely all in this together, and I really, you know, have a lot of love for the city and hope that things can be turned around, but unfortunately, without a, without a law enforcement budget that completely starts to dwindle and, you know, losing, you know, dismantled was actually the word used by the city of Eureka Police Department in regards to some of the services and units that have been dismantled, you know, so you can kind of feel the insinuation on that end of what's going on and why we're having more safety, you know, concerns amongst business owners. So, I just wanted to say thank you for at least, you know, putting out the effort to hear us collectively and understand why this exhaustion is taking place. And hopefully, we could work on getting EPD some funding, getting that Old Town guard or, excuse me, the Old Town officer position filled, which I think, you know, there was a recent officer that came through, and whether he's going to be in Old Town or not, I guess remains to be seen, but yeah, just wanted to say thank you, and appreciate it.
Thank you, Roy. Okay, now, do you see anybody else?
I see no one else.
Okay, so with that, we're going to close public comment and move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22, if a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items, and no one has brought anything forward to me.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So, we have a motion in a second, please vote.
Councilmember Castellano absent. You know, four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. And legislative action correspondence, do we have any? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. The Tier Spec Local Coastal Program Amendment, Senior Planner Castellano.
Great, thank you. Let's see, screen share. I wonder if someone's going to mess with it for me.
I know. Okay.
All right. Good evening, council members. Tonight I present the final components of the Tier Spec Local Coastal Program Amendment. At your last city council meeting on March 19th, a public hearing was held for the entire project, and- project, and then council adopted three resolutions. One, adopting the initial study mitigated negative declaration for the entire project, approving the surplus property and alley easement vacation for the notch within 2,000 Broadway. Three, approving a land use plan map amendment to change the land use designation from industrial to commercial on 936 West Hawthorne Street. And the city council also introduced Bill Number 1017 to amend the implementation map to also change the zoning designation from industrial to commercial on 936 West Hawthorne Street to be consistent with the land use designation change. As a recap, the entire project resolves the clouded title issue over 2,000 Broadway and allows 936 West Hawthorne Street to have consistent land use and zoning designations as 2,000 Broadway to allow both parcels under the same ownership to be redeveloped together with commercial uses. So therefore, now, we recommend you adopt the ordinance for the Implementation Plan Zoning Map Amendment to change the zoning from industrial to commercial on 936 West Hawthorne Street and adopt a resolution authorizing city staff to transmit the Local Coastal Program Amendment to change both the land use and zoning maps in the land use plan and the implementation plan to the California Coastal Commission for certification. Here's a suggested motion, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Senior Planner? Okay, seeing none, we'll open this up to public comment. Is anyone here from the public who would like to comment on this item? Do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, so seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for comments or a motion. How about and a motion? Councilmember Fernandez.
I'll give it a shot, especially since it's written up there. Thank you. I move the city council waive reading, read by title only, and adopt Bill Number 1034CS in ordinance of the city council, amending the Implementation Plan Map of the Certified Local Coastal Program to change the zoning designation from general industrial to service commercial on 936 West Hawthorne Street. And is this a separate motion or just...? Okay. And staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Councilmember Castellano absent. Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Senior Planner Castellano. Okay, moving on, Open Space Parks and Recreation Commission, and that's with... I forget your title. Which title are you under? Assistant?
City Manager.
City Clerk Pam. City Clerk Powell. She wears so many hats.
Tonight, before you, is the second reading, the adoption of the amendment to the Parks and Rec... or, let me get this right, Open Space Parks and Recreation Commission. And this is the change that changes it from a nine-member board to a five-to-seven-member board. Currently, it will be held at a seven-member board, and it is there for your adoption, and I'm available for questions.
There any questions? Okay, seeing no... seeing none, we'll bring it out to the public for comment. Sorry, Councilmember Contra Estelich has two pairs of glasses on. I was distracted. Just calling her out there. Is there anybody from the public, excuse me, that came to comment on this item? Seeing none, do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Great, so we'll bring it back to council for a motion and a vote. Councilmember Bauer.
I motion to waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt Bill Number 1035-CS in ordinance of the city council amending Title III, Chapter 33, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Section 33.045, Open Space Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second. Please vote. I think it was Mario. Oh, was it Renee?
It was me.
It was Renee. Give it to Renee.
Two glasses over one.
Goodness gracious.
Councilmember Castellano absent. Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to reports and action items. So we brought forward Economic Development Project Manager Asbury to discuss the Eureka Cultural Arts District Memorandum of Understanding.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, I am bringing before you a MOU for the Eureka Cultural Arts District. So I'm going to give you a little bit of background, and then I'm going to pass it off to City Attorney Luna, who will talk you through the MOU. So this is something that started in 2015. AB 189 authorized the California Arts Council to establish state-designated cultural districts. At the time, Libby Maynard was the executive director of the Ink People, and she came to the Art and Culture Commission and said, this is something that we should partner on and apply for, and we all agreed. And so we started working on our cultural asset mapping. And so we started citywide, and we used the state definition of a high concentration of cultural facilities, creative enterprises, or arts venues that serve as a main anchor of attraction. And this was brought before the Art and Culture Commission three times, and we kept whittling it down and whittling it down until we came up with this really defined cultural district boundary. And once that map was finalized, it was approved by Art and Culture, and then it was brought to city council and approved along with a resolution. And then when we submitted our application for the cultural district to the CAC, we listed the Ink People as the lead agency with the city of Eureka and Eureka Main Street as the partners. After we submitted our application, we were... we made it to the next round. We were semifinalists. There was 22 semifinalist districts, and I bring this up because Arcata was one of them. And so for a brief moment, we combined with Arcata with the Creamery District, and then the CAC came and did a site visit, and they decided that they didn't want us to combine. And so Eureka was awarded the designation, and Arcata is working on their designation, and I think that they will be designated with this next round. But currently, it's just the Eureka boundary. And so we are one of 14 cultural districts in the state. It was a really competitive process. It's a big deal that we got this. When we were awarded the designation, there really wasn't any funding associated with this. They gave us a budget of $5,000. We bought some banners on Fourth and Fifth, which are in pretty rough shape at this point. We built a website and just kind of waited. And then in 2023, they decided to recertify the 14 existing cultural districts. And with that recertification, we were given another five years of the designation, and we were also awarded $671,000 to be dispersed over three years. And that's really what brought us to where we are tonight, is we wanted to create kind of a more formal structure for how to administrate the cultural district and especially this funds. So part of the MOU tonight, I think the biggest thing I want to point out is that we are adding the Weot Tribe as a partner to our cultural district as a fourth partner. We're also going to be creating a leadership council that will oversee this district and the administration of the projects in it. And then we are still participating in statewide efforts, coordinating with other cultural districts, and then also partnering with the California Arts Council. So after the MOU is signed, our three priorities that we're going to focus on is marketing the district, expanding cultural and creative activities with funding and support, and then also funding and supporting long-lasting signifiers such as like monuments and murals. We really want everyone to feel like they are represented in the district and they can actually see that representation. And so now I'm going to pass it over to City Attorney Luna.
Good evening again, mayor and council. So thank you very much. Project Manager Asbury did a great job of giving you the history and the purpose of the MOU as well. But I will just add that, you know, this is a somewhat unique situation where we do have four organizations who are all pulling together to give life to a cultural district that wouldn't otherwise exist. And so this MOU is, I've called it the scaffolding for this district, this cultural arts district, because it doesn't have a home of its own without cooperation. And so this is a really cool MOU. It's a really cool thing to have been involved in drafting this document so that, you know, these four organizations that are all committed to the same thing can ensure that the money that we've been given by the state can be then distributed back into the community equitably. And I certainly hope that this MOU reflects that. It's been vetted by all of the organizations, all the member organizations. We've all spent a lot of time on this document. And I am... I believe that two of the four member agencies have approved it. I know that the Weot Tribe was going to approve it at its first meeting in April, and I don't know if that's happened yet, but I do expect that it will happen soon. So if you have any questions, I am here for those. Thanks.
Thank you both. Are there any questions? Councilmember Fernandez.
Thank you, mayor. I like the way that the MOU is laid out, discussing the leadership board, how that'll work. For the city, what is our role in this? Because I would imagine otherwise, it would likely just be local nonprofits who typically come together for something like this. So curious what our role is.
Yeah, so I believe that in the beginning, it was a requirement of the state that a local agency be involved in the application process. And so part of the requirements and Project Manager Asbury was there when it happened, so she can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a requirement that there be a local agency, that there be a business group and an arts group. And that was the configuration that the state was looking for when it was seeking applications for designation of cultural arts districts. So that's why the city was involved in the beginning.
And in looking at the four organizations, including us, that are involved in this, it's... I understand that they would be coming up for the guidelines and such for the disbursement of funds, the grant funds. But I'm assuming, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that you need not necessarily belong to the four groups as a nonprofit organization to try and get access to any of this to...
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. The idea is not that only members would get funds.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public comment. Is anyone from the public here that would like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one in chambers, we'll come over to Zoom, and I cannot see that phone number.
Phone number ending in 9781.
Thank you.
Phone number ending in 9781.
Hi, Roy Gomez here. I just wanted to... I just wanted to point out, and I'm curious whether council actually reviewed certain conflicts of interest that occur between the Ink People and the several members of the Ink People. I mean, Swan, you were treasurer of the Ink People in 2018. Mario's organization, Humboldt Grassroots, was under the Ink People's umbrella and the Ink Annex through his organization. Obviously, Leslie's not there, so she doesn't have to recuse herself, which is great. But I do believe, and Katie Moulton, she's been with the Ink People for 17 years. I think there needs to be some recusals and some understanding of the conflicts of interest that are so obvious and so apparent. The Ink People in this memorandum, and obviously with the Dreammakers and with the Eureka City Street Art Fair was a Dreammaker also. The Ink People partnered with David Cobb, who is the Weot Advancement Manager. There's some conflicts there as well. Leslie and David were partnered in Artist Dismantling Capitalism Symposium that they hosted for five consecutive years. So there's a lot of crossover and a lot of conflicts of interest, and I'm just really hoping that there's some understanding that these are financial aspects and financial connections that the FPPC should be taking a look at, or at least the city should at least give a phone call into the hotline and figure out whether all of this crossover is actually conflicting and whether it's legal or not. Because the city of Eureka is embedded with Ink People, Ink People members. You all know who you are, and it seems to be okay to host symposiums about abolishing capitalism and abolishing the police department. You know, these are things that are apparently acceptable to other members there. Renee said that she was okay with that and doesn't really consider that as any kind of issues, but obviously, the public do. You know, our EPD has been severely befunded, you know, and that's something that we learned at that last event that was hosted there at the Warfinger. So I really do hope that the city is paying attention and that people are being aware of the fact that the Ink People are taking a lot off the top, and obviously, there's a lot of conflict going on with Ink People members in the city, running the city, and to have a MOU that specifically partners with the Ink People, it certainly is something that needs to be addressed and needs to be understood. There needs to be transparency and accountability with all of that, considering that, you know...
Thank you. Thank you, Roy. Your time is up. Thanks for being here. Adina.
Hello again. Good evening, council. Thank you so much. I have some questions about this MOU. Eureka Main Street, per their website, has not posted public minutes since August of 2023. And being that they are a city partner, I believe they should be subject to the Brown Act, even though that's not legally required. That would allow for full transparency for the constituents. Although Councilmember Castellano is absent, she is the council liaison for Main Street, so I would like to confirm if she abstained from discussion and votes via that liaison position with Main Street. And I was also wondering why the Ink People website lists the city as a top funder, and Ink People does administer the grants, so their Form 990 filed with IRS does not outline the grant allocations received and then the disbursements to projects. So I'm wondering if those can be released per public records request. And I did see that PG&E is a top funder. I do have issues with that funding partner, being that, for example, Rebuild North Bay is a nonprofit that was founded by Mr. Darius Anderson, who owns all of Sonoma County Media, and is a lobbyist for Governor Newsom. And he started Rebuild North Bay, which received $2 million in funds, and rather than allocate the funding to the fire victims as a 501(c)(3), they lobbied $2 million for PG&E because PG&E was one of his clients through his lobbying firm. And I find that to be highly illegal. So if you're not faithful in one area, for myself, who's a follower of Christ, you have to be equally yoked. So if you're doing something which could be considered criminal in one area, what are you doing in other areas? And so therefore, those allocations are concerning to me. So thank you so much. I yield my time.
Thank you, Adina. Shannon.
Hi, I just wanted to say I'm here in support of the Ink People. They do a lot of amazing work in our community. My daughter is special needs, and they have a lot of amazing programs for children with special needs. So I just wanted to throw out my support for this amazing nonprofit organization that we are so lucky to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Do you see anyone else?
I see no one else on Zoom.
Okay, so we will bring this back to council for comments and a motion. Councilmember Bauer.
I'll make the motion to review, approve, and authorize signing of Eureka Cultural Arts District Memorandum of Understanding between the city of Eureka, the Ink People, the Weot Tribe, and Eureka Main Street.
I'll second. Thank you. We have a motion that's been seconded.
If I can make a comment?
Sure.
I was working at the Ink People, and I don't work for them anymore, but I did work at the Ink People as an employee when Libby Maynard brought this up. And she always felt like the Ink People should be Eureka's official arts organization because they kind of already are. There's over 150 different projects that run through there. there, doing all kinds of amazing work in our community. Uh, and they are the, the backbone of, of so many great things. And I'm just delighted that, to see, um, Libby Maynard's vision come to fruition. The fact that with the Wiat are included in this was a big part of what she wanted to see. And I'm, I'm just, um, over the moon to, to see this, this partnership come together. And it's going to do a lot of good in our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, the comment, of course, goes to Humboldt Grassroots, or my affiliation with such. And it's, uh, it's that I've volunteered as an organizer. Of course, I've written a few pieces for them too, on whatever website, uh, website or social media they use. It is confusing though, considering that they were founded in 2007. I didn't move here until 2017. So I'm wondering, at one point, I traveled through time and took on all their bureaucratic administrative, uh, fluff there. Uh, but if I could ask the city attorney in the event that I can't think for myself and I've forgotten what, uh, conflict of interest is, could, could you help me cover the base elements of that policy, just so I can make sure that I haven't violated it?
Yeah, I think it's really important, uh, councilmember Fernandez, to remember that this is not a funding agreement. This is, uh, monies that have been given to the cultural arts district from the state. Uh, this is not a, a decision to give city funds to the cultural arts district. And so I think the financial concerns that were raised by Mr. Gomez, uh, don't apply here. And I also just want to comment, if I may, that under this agreement, the leadership council that's being created, uh, will be making their decisions openly and publicly. And so as far as transparency goes, I think this is a model for it, uh, not one to be questioned.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, with that, yeah, item six B in the MOU, leadership council is a Brown Act body and defines right there what they have to be held to and what they are going to be asserting themselves are not, uh, yeah, what they are going to be asserting of themselves in terms of a conflict, conflict of interest code and comply with 700 or Form 700 disclosure. So, I mean, like you just said, you can't get much more transparent than that. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Contrares Deloche?
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly comment. Um, I'm also excited about the, um, cooperation with the Wiat Tribe. And I just appreciate also staff and everybody that's worked on putting this together. And also, um, I just think it's really exciting that that was this, you know, little tiny sum of money. And now there's this much larger one that is, you know, going to be able to really benefit our community. And it's very exciting to me to find out what different directions that's going to go and, and what way we're going to get to see that. Um, so that's it.
Thank you.
$671,000 going right into the artist community.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. If there are no further comments, please vote.
Councilmember Castellano absent. Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. So moving on to mixed neighborhood overlay development with Development Services Director Kenyon? So a point of order, do we need to vote to allow, is she coming in on Zoom? Oh, great. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. I guess we'll take a five minute, or we'll take a four minute break till seven o'clock. And then, well, because then it'll be seven.
So by the time you introduce yourself.
Okay, good evening, council. Um, at the, at your request, the planning team has provided additional information on the potential development of a mixed neighborhood overlay, which has been included in your agenda packet. Um, if developed and adopted by council, the overlay could then be applied by council to a site or sites within the city to add objective design or form-based standards that would apply in addition to a site's based zoning district. The purpose of the additional standards would be to help ensure additional residential density and neighborhood serving commercial uses within or adjacent to predominantly single-family neighborhoods are designed to be compatible with those neighborhoods. Um, you see, you know, especially in the older neighborhoods of Eureka, there are some really good examples of different housing types intermixed with single-family homes, um, like duplexes and townhomes. And, um, the different housing options are, um, blended with the single-family homes where we are actually hitting density thresholds necessary to support transit, to support corner stores. Um, but it doesn't feel dense in the same way as, you know, like a large internally focused apartment complex. Um, so this overlay would be exploring how to blend gently density into or adjacent to single-family neighborhoods. Um, and the neighborhood around the Jacobs campus would be one of a selection of neighborhoods explored when designing the overlay. That's, yeah.
Do we have questions for Director Kenyon? Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So when we're talking about overlays, can you, can you tell me in a broad sense what that is, what it, what it does?
Yeah, it's adding additional standards or additional allowances on top of the existing base standards for, so everywhere, every property in the city has a zoning district, uh, be it service commercial or residential low. And then this would be adding some design standards on top of that base zoning district.
So it doesn't rezone, it doesn't upzone, it doesn't change the zoning in and of itself?
Right.
Okay. And then this helps set some standards, some rules around what the designs might be then within that particular overlay area or that particular zone?
Correct. Because the base zones are really focused on what uses are allowed. And then they give kind of a broad brush, you know, you're not allowed more than 22 dwelling units an acre. And 22 dwelling units an acre can look and feel very differently depending on how it's oriented to the street, how big the parcels are, how big the buildings are. And so this would be dealing with those design-related things.
Okay. And, and then as you pointed out, when you were describing this at the beginning, you know, we're using Jacobs here. There's no denying that. That's going to be what we're using as kind of our model as we move forward then.
That would be one of, we would be asking the consultant that we hire to look at a number of neighborhoods, and that would be one of them.
Okay. What, what might be the other neighborhoods we would look at?
Other probably, uh, areas where you have maybe existing neighborhood commercial next to single-family, looking at those transition zones, um, areas where you're transitioning from maybe a commercial to a low-density residential, um, other, other single-family neighborhoods or adjacent to other single-family.
So like maybe mixed use or, uh, other neighborhoods like the Henderson Center area, maybe?
Right.
Okay.
Like expanding out from there.
Okay. And then, uh, oh shoot, I just lost that train of thought there. I'm sorry. Uh, I'll go to the next question then. Um, it's, it's my understanding, yeah, like you just said, we might be, or we would be utilizing a consultant, hence the $40,000. Uh, can you speak more to that and why we would be having to go that route instead of in-house?
Be, uh, partly to, uh, save us, uh, staff time, uh, and then also because they have expertise that we would be relying on, particularly, uh, urban, uh, not urban design, graphic design skills. Because form-based code involves graphics. We'd also want to, uh, create some mock-up, uh, visuals to, uh, as communication tools, things like that. Um, they'd also have SEQA lawyers that could advise us. Um, and they can help us with community outreach. Um, similar to the waterfront Eureka plan, having a consultant on that was really helpful, particularly for, uh, helping with outreach and the graphics and writing, writing the code, you know, finding examples and using that to write a good code is, is extremely difficult and time-consuming work. So, uh, that will save us a lot of effort.
And then going, going back for a moment, uh, you know, this would be setting the, the guidelines, the rules again for how the buildings might be developed. Um, this, this doesn't, this is just creating that, that policy. It doesn't say that even though we're looking at these areas, whether it's Jacobs or Henderson Center, that we're placing the overlay on those, correct?
Correct. The first step is just, uh, we would develop an overlay and then we'd bring it to you to adopt into the code and it wouldn't yet apply anywhere. And then, um, separately, you could take an action to apply it in the future, um, as you thought fit.
And, and we'd be soliciting, uh, public input during that process with the consultant?
Correct.
Okay. And, and historically, have we, have we utilized overlays in any other capacity?
Currently, uh, we've used for our residential zones, the base zones don't allow for, uh, neighborhood markets, but we have some great neighborhood markets that are pre-existing our code in these residential areas. So we created this neighborhood market overlay that sets what, if we applied it to a site, it would allow for a neighborhood market, but then it has a bunch of standards to ensure that, that a market is compatible with a neighborhood. Like it limits it to certain types of markets, um, and sets performance standards on it. And so, um, we've applied that to all the, uh, old markets to legalize them. And it could be applied elsewhere if somebody, if the council wanted it, or if a, a property owner wanted it, we could apply it in the future. That's another overlay we have in the city. We also have a qualified overlay, which doesn't have set standards the way this mixed, this mixed neighborhood overlay would. You, you adopt standards for a specific site when you adopt the overlay. And council used that recently for the Crowley site to set additional standards on that site because we were upzoning it to service commercial, but it is of, has wetlands and is vulnerable. So we used a qualifying overlay to impose additional, uh, regulations on and limits on what could get developed there to tamp down what was allowed in the service commercial.
I'm going to say thank you because it's, seems like you're very, very passionate and very excited for this. So I think we could talk about this longer, but I'm going to yield for now.
Councilmember Moulton?
A question that came up last time was about, um, the, the staffing, uh, just, um, the pressure on staff. And you mentioned that having a consultant do some of this work would relieve some of that. Um, do you have any other concerns about putting this, uh, process in front of anything else that's on your plate? In the last conversation, I was like, well, what do we, like, what is this going to cost us in staff time? And you said, yes, something is going to get pushed down the road. Does the, does the consultant mitigate that or?
Uh, it's, you know, council provides direction to staff. Um, clearly anything that's added to staff's plate, um, makes us reprioritize whatsoever in our, in our basket already. I don't think that staff could tell you specifically what this would delay or anything like that. But obviously putting this on there would be an additional workload for staff. Um, you know, one of the things, we've had a lot of things come up, you know, some of the lawsuits we've had, some of this, you know, things that we've had to deal with have delayed things. So things pop up all the time, whether it's development services, public works, community services, emergencies happen and priorities get changed. But it's up to council to determine what, um, the direction that staff goes for this. One of the things that I personally have a concern with, just to be honest about it, is our local coastal program is, um, of vital importance to the city. And, um, because of not a lot of things that have come up, that's been pushed back a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to ask you a question you can't really answer. Anyone else? Councilmember Bauer?
I appreciate councilmember Moulton bringing that up. Um, and I, um, uh, city manager Slattery basically, uh, brought up the issue that I'm concerned about, the LCP, right? I mean, we've been kicking that can down the road for a long time. And I, you know, I've, I've run the trail and I look at all these, you know, old, you know, dilapidated structures and bulldozed ice plant, you know, all these things. I'm like, when are we going to get to that? When are we going to, you know, develop this beautiful waterfront? And then I think we add another, another thing. And I, I, I think this is a good idea, I really do, but I'm just concerned about focus. And I mean focus, not just staff, but us. You know, we have a lot of stuff on our plate and we're adding another thing that might delay other things. And so I struggle with that, you know? I really want us to explore this, but is this the time, you know? Is this, and I understand we have some things going hot, obviously, that kind of have brought this up. But I'm still torn about that this is a, a focus right now, given so many things we're doing. So that's all.
Any, yeah, was that a question or a comment? Oh, it's question time. Any further questions? Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. And, uh, sorry I was late, everyone. I was traveling back from Sacramento, so I'm just off the road. Um, but I would love to hear a little bit more, um, understanding, or I, I guess the question is, in terms of, you know, councilmember Bauer and Moulton's, um, questions, like how, you know, for sure, any one person can only do so many things on one day. Um, and it sounds like this maybe is putting some delay on the local coastal program or what? Can you just speak to like what that looks like or what the?
I know, LCP is a huge priority for us. And it has been for a long time. It's somewhat out of our control. We've tried to work with the Coastal Commission, follow their guidance and provide them the information they wanted. That has delayed this process significantly. So it's not just related to things that should have come, have come up. Um, clearly because of our housing element and the, the, the associated lawsuits and everything related to that have, have caused problems. And I think that that's definitely delayed because that obviously raises to a higher priority at that point. Um, you know, like I said, I don't think that we could tell you specifically that this is going to delay the LCP update, but it is additional work that was not planned previously. Um, I will say having a consultant on board will help significantly, but I liken it to the town hall meetings that we've had or some of the other things. Planning does a really good job of, of, of getting public input. And there's a lot of effort that goes into that. Whether it's through the ASICS grants that we got with the Link, um, property, there was a lot of work that was done behind the scenes in order to make that happen. So I see this as being similar. I don't know, one meeting, maybe two. I'm not sure. Um, but it would be similar to like those ASIC grants when we did that, which became a priority because obviously we got $50 million out of that and it was beneficial. So I think that's what council has to weigh is, is benefit worth that.
Yeah, what I like most about my job is there are so many different things we're working on. It's really fun, but there are only five full-time planners under me. So like assistant planner, Penelope Ponce, she was work, she's been working on the, uh, uh, neighborhood naming effort. She also really was instrumental in putting, helping Katie put on the town hall. Um, and she just is dropping all of her work this week to get design review done for the housing authority, uh, a staff report done for them. So it's kind of like, we're always just, uh, figuring out what's the top priority for that week and working on that. It's hard to explain like all of the stuff we're working on and then how it gets prioritized.
I mean, without understanding fully, I, I get it, you know? And I guess just to follow up, is there a way of, I don't know, like the light version of this, you know what I mean?
Right. We can have like, you know, not, we don't need to have 10 neighborhood, I mean, 10 outreach meetings, you know, we can, we can balance it so that it's not, yeah.
And, and I think it's really important because of this overlay. And I think that, um, Development Services Director Kenyon made a point of this as well, is this is a tool that we'd like to use throughout the city. And if we want to do this, we want to make sure that we get input from throughout the city, not make this to a specific geographic area because it could be placed anywhere.
Councilmember Contrares Deloche?
Sorry, I'm having kind of difficulty formulating this question. And, um, I just, I, I guess I would, hmm, I mean, but this is, this is kind of a statement too. I mean, this is in response specifically though, to the Jacobs site. I mean, it, it, this is, you know, the first bullet point under benefits of overlay development. It's talking about the potential application to the Jacobs site regardless of the results of the upcoming initiative. And so, you know, this is, uh, you know, seems as though, and maybe I'm, you know, I, I did watch the meeting two weeks ago. Um, I had COVID, that's why I was out. Um, but, and so I watched the discussion around it, but it, correct me if I'm wrong, this is in many ways a kind of, um, But correct me if I'm wrong, this is in many ways a kind of a response to kind of the anxiety of what, you know, the upheaval of that site and and not knowing who the potential purchaser is, which has not changed hands yet and is still in the ownership and control of a separate government, Eureka City Schools from ourselves. But would you say, would you say that that's kind of what's motivating that? Could you help me out?
Can I answer that, Mayor?
Yes.
When we got the staff report from the town hall, the the short answer was that there was no consensus on what people wanted to see as far as uses. There was a wide variety of what folks wanted to see. But there was a consistent response that they wanted public participation and transparency. And the of the options that the staff brought back, this is the one that seemed to answer that the best without necessarily being something that whereas if we zoned it, if we just rezoned it, that that could go out the window. So my my initial reason for bringing this up was to capture what we got at that town hall. I didn't want all of that effort and all of that response to just dissipate into nothing. And I wanted to turn that into some something actionable. And I'm just really impressed with that the staff has come back. This seems just incredibly useful to me, but I'm getting into comments. Does that, so it's not necessarily, I'm clearly the Jacobs campus is, you know, there's some stuff's going to happen there, you know, something. And so I'm addressing that. But fortunately, this option came back being useful for other places in the community. Maybe not as urgently as at Jacobs, but that's, I think, for maybe after comment.
Does that answer your question or you have one more?
I do have another one. I guess a comment to other to a question.
Well, it's questions time.
Okay, I feel like I need to explain my question. So now I lost my train of thought.
Sorry.
All right, hang on a second. So I, the anxiety around it, or I don't know that that's the right word, or concerns, I guess, is a better way to put it around it. That's not maybe necessarily something we as a city can address entirely because that property is still under the ownership of Eureka City Schools at this point. And I think the concerns about transparency were concerns about perceived lack of transparency on their part, not on ours. I guess I am wondering how does this address this? I'm not sure who this question is for. So anybody that wants to jump in on this, help me understand how this would prevent. So the second bullet point, hold on, let me look at this really quick so I can just, or sorry, I'm sorry. The first bullet point under benefits of overlay development, potential application to the Jacobs site regardless of the results of the upcoming initiative. And then it says regardless of what residential or mixed-use base zone is adopted for the Jacobs site and what uses the base zone allows, the mixed neighborhood overlay could be applied to ensure new residential and or commercial development allowed by the base zone is sighted and designed to fit with the existing neighborhood scale and character. Help me understand how this overlay interacts with if that initiative passes. How does this overlay? Because I believe the language in the initiative says R1, which is what that area is zoned as. But it also says R2 and R3. And then it says any kind of downtown or commercial use. It has like it opens it wide open if I remember right. And so whereas currently it's just R1, so how does this overlay help with that situation?
Right, so the initiative is really focused on what uses are allowed at the Jacobs site. And it says, you know, if this initiative passes, then in addition to the existing public facilities uses that are allowed, you have to allow all these other uses that are allowed in the downtown, the neighborhood commercial, low and high density residential. And then it says 40% of the site needs to be reserved for high density residential housing. So that's really just looking at what uses are allowed and that, you know, a certain area is is reserved for a certain use. And it doesn't talk at all about the form that the development takes. So this overlay would be focused on on form, not use.
So does this, oh, follow up? So does this prevent any of what that initiative is trying to do? Or does it direct it? Or would it still allow R3 and commercial?
Yeah, it would still allow all the same uses. Yeah, it's like talking about what the buildings will look like. And the building could be occupied by any one of those uses. I mean, minus airport.
Can you clarify just briefly, what kind of uses does that include? Because I think there are some different things. Could we just clarify that really quick?
Oh, my gosh, it's it's like 100 uses that could be allowed there under the initiative.
A Home Depot?
Retail, yeah, retail.
A bar?
A bar.
A four-story apartment complex?
Correct.
Thank you.
Good. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll open this item up to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to share, comment? Hello?
Good evening, Thomas Stewart. Rezoning Jacobs without information from the developer is improper. Your planning department approved the sale of the property without knowing what the developer wants to build at this location. Improper again. Could this be a charter school without a zoning change or a casino for the Wiat tribe? Someone is paying almost $6 million and desperately needs a zone change or they will sacrifice $6 million. No one would do that without some guarantee to proceed with the sale. Someone has given that guarantee to rezone. This is a parking lot war. Parking is a necessary infrastructure for business and government and the people that support the businesses. Imagine Target selling their parking lot, the County Library selling their parking lot, the Adorning Center selling their parking lot, the Eureka Mall selling their parking lot, the Humboldt County Fair selling their parking lot, Costco selling their parking lot. The City of Eureka sold their parking lot. Okay, you sold your parking lot. Security National now owns your parking lot. The Security National, the company that is sponsoring the Housing for All Initiative, which ironically would rezone Jacobs, that would allow high density housing there. The initiative was signed July 21st, 2023 of last year. The park, your parking lot is barricaded by concrete blocks. Okay? The developer is Security National for Jacobs. I will wager here tonight 10 Bitcoin. Please keep these. If I'm wrong, you can keep them. If I'm right, please give them back to me. Any questions? Thank you, I have 40 seconds, 45 seconds. Can I hold this?
Thank you. Point of order, can, we can't accept that. We appreciate that, but we can't accept the.
I just left you 10 Bitcoin. I told the police I'm not leaving with those, okay? I'm a dead man if I leave with those. Okay, they have to stay here. They understand.
They're not real? Oh, they're not real. So point of order, does it matter?
Public might not know that, ma'am.
What?
The public might not know these are not real. I bought them for $10 on eBay. Okay, okay, I explained it to them. They know they're not real.
Thank you so much for.
Going to make a point.
Point made, thank you so much. Okay, so is anybody else in the public? No, okay. So let's start on Zoom with Linda.
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. My name's Linda Hagedorn and my family is one of the original four owners of the Jacobs property. And I'm the trustee over several pieces of property across Allard from Jacobs. Allard marks the border between the city and the county. Got some questions. With this ordinance, is the city attempting to proactively compel or discourage certain use? And I think that's been answered sufficiently. Given three sides of Jacobs or city and one is county, has there been any coordination with the county? What is missing from our current zoning that the overlay was needed? And then how can the public keep informed of the designer bid selection and project plan?
So Linda, would you be willing to put those in an email and send them out to us? We can get those answered for you.
Certainly.
Appreciate that, thank you. You still have time.
I'm very interested in the development. I think that part of town, since I grew up in Eureka and lived in that area, there's a great need for the children in that in there to have a school because they're being bussed across town, kids that are at risk are having to go further. They're open in the public. I'm glad Jacobs was there. I think that we do need a school in that area and hopefully something can be done with for the for the children. And then I'm done, thank you.
Thanks for being here. And it looks, is that Michael? Michael, welcome.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to just comment on this a little bit. You know, in the staff report claims that the proposed overlay zone would could be applied to the Jacobs site regardless of the results of the upcoming initiative, this is incorrect as it relates to the Jacobs site. If the initiative were adopted by the city's election in November, according to Election Code 9217, initiative, if initiative were adopted, it would prohibit the city from adopting a general plan or zoning that would be in conflict with the initiative. So I think you really need to go back to your council and reexamine that because that's an incorrect statement. Also, the proposed overlay zone is purported to be exempt from CEQA. That's not true either. You know, I think there's some real inaccuracies in the staff report here. Also, I think this is just a huge waste of money at this point. You know, if there was something that would come up in the future that you want to spend $40,000 on and directly address that, that's great. But, you know, at this point, I think you're much better off waiting until November and see what happens with the initiative rather than wasting $40,000 of the taxpayers' money on something that might not ever get applied to anything. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Patty.
Can you hear me now, sorry?
Yes.
Hi. Hi again. I just wanted to touch on the the subject of staff time. This really hits home because today I ran into a contractor who was frustrated beyond all means. He's been working on the lot line adjustment on some property here in Eureka. He's reached out to you, Kim, and he's reached out to you, Miles. But I don't believe he's reached out to the rest of the city council, which is unfortunate because they do need to know the timing constraints that are happening right now. He's he's beside himself. He's gotten to the point where he's had to lay off his staff because they cannot work, because they cannot get the process through the city that is needed for them to continue on building houses. So here's a man who's ready and willing to build houses, but your staff is so overworked or busy. I mean, this guy's not even getting return phone calls, thus the frustration and calls to Kim and to Miles. So I think circling back to what kind of time all of this is going to take for your staff, regardless of of the consultant, I think is all that needs to be talked about right now. And honestly, in my opinion, they've already spent too much time. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Colin. Hi, welcome.
Good evening. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I want to thank staff for bringing this forward. I think that the concept is a really interesting one and and could be really helpful in enabling some increased housing production in some of the existing single-family neighborhoods. I do want to urge a little bit of caution in applying the same kind of overlay zone to larger vacant sites, just to be sure that we're not unduly limiting the potential for for housing production in a good infill site, which we have, you know, relatively few of. So I just want to urge that note of caution, but thanks for thinking about this.
Thank you, Colin. And Shannon. Hi again.
Hi. Fascinating conversation. I really appreciate the city, like, putting all the effort into considering this. And in my own research on overlay zones, I find that they can be pretty cool. They can be kind of exclusive in certain instances as well. But yeah, just to second, like some of what the other commentators said, like, I just, it's just weird because of how this process started and because we don't know what what's going to happen with that property and what the intentions are of these new mystery buyers. It's just kind of this weird thing. But I do think it's great that you want to consider the community involvement as much as possible. And to second off another commenter, I mean, I just have a lot of good memories of seeing kids playing soccer in that field. And it would be awesome to keep that as a mixed use for children and recreation in our community and especially in that neighborhood. That neighborhood needs some love. And I just really appreciate that the city is taking a lot of time and consideration and this is a creative idea. I don't know if it's the right time for it, but I do appreciate that you brought this up for a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Do you see anyone else on Zoom?
I see no one else.
Okay, then we will bring it back to council for our comments and a motion. Councilmember Castellano.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, thank you to Director Kenyon for bringing this forward. I think that the public wants to have more opportunity to talk about these things. And I think this is a great way to do it, honestly. You know, and I do have concerns about staff time, but I am going to trust that staff can regulate their time and prioritize the things like the local coastal program, you know, as well. You know, I think, I don't think that this needs to be like the only, you know, like to take the forefront and take away from what we're already doing. You know, so at this point, I feel supportive of moving forward with it, especially given that I just think that there's a lot of confusion in the community. You know, I personally am excited for someone who lives in a kind of more multifamily mixed-use neighborhood that there could be things in this process that could give new insights, you know, for sure, you know, in my neighborhood. I mean, throughout Eureka, there's opportunities for different kinds of developments, different ways of thinking about neighborhoods. And I think that this could be a way of really thinking about, you know, how do we use form-based code in a neighborhood setting to give different, maybe innovative opportunities for place making? So that's my excitement around it. You know, and, you know, I know there are always probably more things going on. And so just, I just want to also say, like, as I'm encouraging moving forward with this, I'm also encouraging to, you know, take off the size bites that are appropriate to the overall workload.
Councilmember Moulton.
I was reminded, not that I needed to be reminded, at the Eureka City Schools two by two that the property has not been closed on, that the disposition of it is still up in the air. And so I too am really curious about who is going to buy that property and what they want to do with it. Ultimately, though, whatever they do with it needs to fit into the neighborhood. And that's the thing that I'm hearing most from my constituents is that whenever they give an example of something they don't want there or what that they do want there is that they want something that's going to fit in. And creating an overlay zone is going to create a set of rules for how things can fit in without limiting the uses. Having said that, I concur with Councilmember Castellano that while I would like to see this go forward, I also would like to just trust the staff to prioritize their own time. So I would say that I'd be in favor of moving forward without putting a fire under it. So, you know, it needs to be done. It needs to be you, with this tool would be useful all over the city. And it would be, it would answer the need for for public participation. It would answer this need for people to be able to say what they want to have in their neighborhood, not just at Jacobs, not just in my. not just at Jacobs, not just in my neighborhood, but all over the city. But yeah, it doesn't need to come in front of other more pressing things. But it sounds like we don't have to tell you to put it in front of it. We can just ask you to go ahead and do this when you are, um, ready and able, correct? Thank you.
Any further comments?
Is there, I don't think there is a motion.
There is not a motion, but we could use one.
We're...
To continue discussion.
Okay. Do you have a sample motion? Okay. So I, yeah, I would, um, move to direct staff to develop a mixed neighborhood overlay zone to be incorporated into the city's zoning code utilizing public input, uh, at their best timing.
Second.
Great. So we have a motion in a second and we have further comments. Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Yeah, and I'm sorry about the double glasses. It's a, I, I need bifocals. Yeah, I, so, a, a comment. So I guess a couple of things. So I've kind of been going back and forth on this because, you know, my initial thought was, um, no. Um, I don't like this idea mainly because it feels kind of, for one thing, we haven't done something when we were talking pertaining to the discussion specifically a couple of weeks ago during that council meeting, that we hadn't, um, we hadn't done something like this before where we sort of saw, hey, somebody bought a property and so now we're, we're going to either zone it differently or we're going to do an overlay over it, that that was just not something that had been done before. And I wasn't really comfortable with us setting that kind of a precedent. I also, the other thing that I wasn't, you know, uh, very comfortable with is, you know, this is a property that's owned by a separate government entity right now that's in the process of trying to figure out what they're going to do. I think the salient point, what you said, um, Councilmember Maltin, is this hasn't exchanged hands, you know? Whoever's involved in this process and whatever their intention, you know, is, isn't really fully known. And, uh, you know, it's, I think, four months out from when it was initially entered into. I think only a thousand dollars has exchanged hands. Nothing has moved forward with this. And, and so we don't know what's going to happen with that. And I think the school board's kind of got its own problems with us right now in figuring this out. And, you know, uh, and obviously for the city and for your concerns for your neighborhood and, you know, years of listening to everybody, um, talk about concerns over the site that has just continuously deteriorated and been at minimum an eyesore, but has probably also been, uh, an attractor of crime and other bad activities. It's just a shame. It's kind of a, in my opinion, a broken trust on the schools, uh, school district's part. And maybe I shouldn't say something like that, but it, I just feel like when you let something just really decay like that and you know it's going to impact the neighborhood, uh, it's not right. But, you know, speaking to, I, I guess, I've just kind of thought, I don't want to see us doing any, I don't see the rush on doing anything like right now. The rush to do this now. I don't know if that's the right word to use. It seems an obvious response to, you know, this, uh, the initiative and the potential exchange of this property into hands that we're, you know, unaware of intent. And so it almost kind of feels like a, I, I don't want to say a knee-jerk reaction because it's clearly an educated and calculated and carefully considered, along with talking to neighborhood, you know, the neighborhood and listening to their input, but clearly a response to what's happening. Um, and I don't know if that's the appropriate response for us right now. And that's really, for me, what it comes down to is I'm not sure if this is the appropriate response for us as City of Eureka at the moment. Or if it's kind of like, we should just sort of focus on watch, wait, make sure that people are informed, not of our particular opinions about what's going on. I mean, I know we are entitled to our opinions, but more making sure that people understand, like, what I said earlier, you know, that part of that initiative allows for R1, R2, R3 commercial. I mean, it is a really broad, um, the language is. Um, and that's why I made that, you know, kind of obtuse or whatever, kind of exaggerated point about a Home Depot or a bar or a four-story apartment complex, just to illustrate the point that that would allow for all of those types of uses, um, in the initiative. And I think it's important for people to know that and understand that. And maybe I'm more comfortable with us focusing on the push and the education and understanding of what people are going to be voting on, um, in a neutral position and less us creating overlay. The one thing I do like about this, I got to meet with, um, Director Kenyon today, and I really appreciate that, is that, um, this gives us that ability moving forward, not this part. So I know that there's a secondary point to this, and that is it's going to come back and everybody's going to say, now can we apply it to Jacobs? And so I don't want to, like, operate under the illusion that this isn't for that intent in a lot of, um, for the most part. But this portion tonight would not be for that. But I see it as a step one of two, um, with that being the seeming obvious intent, um, for some of the council members. I'm not comfortable with that component of it, um, for the reasons that I've listed. And I know that there is going to be this drag on staff time regardless, and I'm not comfortable with that either. And so I also think, you know, this engagement is very important, but also think the fact that this does impact a separate government entity means that there needs to be, that we need to be cognizant of that with decisions that we're making, that that is impacting what they're trying to do, um, in their sales. And so, um, but I do appreciate that this gives people this, a potential ability to put an overlay in different places going forward, like if we were to pass this tonight, that then that development moving forward, not speaking to Jacobs, but just the city as at large, gives us that ability to be a little bit more specific about what we're looking for with development in those areas. And I'm sorry, that is a long, long amount of talking, and I've been thinking about this a lot, so I'm done.
Thank you. And I think City Attorney Luna, would you like to comment, please?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Bregel, for, uh, an opportunity just to make sure that the record is very clear here, that what we're doing, what we're asking for tonight is direction to move forward with development of an overlay that would, of course, have to come back to council later to be added to the zoning code. And so I want to make sure, I, I think that council is very clear on that. I want to make sure that the public is very clear that we are not changing the zoning code tonight. We are simply asking council to authorize some money and some additional staff time on what promises to be a, a project that wasn't in front of us before. Uh, and that's all that's happening tonight. Any actual decisions or changes to the zoning code, anything like that, those decisions aren't being made tonight. So I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez, and then I'll get you.
Thank you, Mayor. You, you had me in the first half, Councilmember, because I thought you were looking at my notes for a brief moment. I, I, because I do agree with you that, that there's concern, we may not be able to address the anxiety of the unknown for that particular neighborhood, let alone all of the neighborhoods. I, I, I do believe though that this, this overlay could assuage or mitigate some of that trepidation that this neighborhood has endured for about twenty years at this point. The building sat vacant, it finally was demolished in 2021, I believe. And that being said, you know, this only approves designing an overlay, I think, as it was just hinted at or overtly said by, uh, our attorney. And, and that this wouldn't apply, you know, that this overlay itself doesn't apply to any particular neighborhood, district, or property. Thinking that this wouldn't apply to Jacobs in the future though would be a bit obtuse on our part because that's why we're discussing it. Uh, I, I just don't see this development of an overlay being finished for, for quite a few months. And so with, with staff time, with public education, that buys us time to figure out, is this in the best interest? And even if it might not work for Jacobs, I think it's, it's been alluded to by council members, yeah, over here to the left of me, just that it would, uh, still behoove our city to have something in that, uh, in that avenue. Councilmember Maltin and I did meet with the members of the Eureka City School Board and, and the superintendent in our two-by-two where we discussed how this may affect that area, where we communicated our best to state that this wouldn't necessarily apply to Jacobs, but would have an effect on it like we're discussing tonight. There were concerns from the district that this may impact their current course in negotiations though. There wasn't a vehement, no, there wasn't an absolutely do not do this. You know, there was still, again, that, that trepidation because it's unknown how it's going to impact their current course, let alone their negotiations though. That is something that we could have discussed much earlier had we been included in the process. Could have been something that we had met at, at some point in the last year prior to January if, uh, former Superintendent Van Fleck had been more responsive to our requests to meet. At a minimum, again, this would afford more opportunity for public discussion in the next few months and provide the city a tool for the purpose for defining the look of future development.
Councilmember Maltin.
Just to clarify, because I, is my understanding that, um, this overlay and in fact, any zoning that the city imposes on the Jacobs lot would not affect the Eureka City Schools? City Attorney Luna, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. We would make sure that there was no conflict with the initiative prior to bringing it back for adoption.
Oh, meaning to say that the Eureka City Schools doesn't have to listen to our zoning? Like, right now, they, like, if we zoned it commercial, then Eureka City Schools could still build a school there, like, they don't have to. So this would not affect Eureka City School. It might not...
So long as it was school-related, yes, that's right. If they wanted to build a, a Home Depot, they would have to listen to our zoning.
But if, if the schools wanted to build a school or, or, you know, something else, public service, or the, um, CHP came in as a state agency, uh, as the purchaser or developer, that that would, this initiative, this, um, zoning overlay would not apply to them. We don't, you know, for better or for worse, we don't get to tell them what they can and can't do.
Correct.
Thank you. And just to, uh, one point, um, from Councilmember Contreras Deloche, I, I did bring this up in response, um, to community concerns. But I would say that it's not necessarily a response to the ballot initiative or even to the sale. It was a response to the fact that something is going to change. And everyone is concerned that their wants and their desires that have been, um, you know, kicked to the wayside for, for many decades are going to continue to, uh, not be heard. And that is what this is in response to, is folks wanting to make sure that their voices are heard.
Thank you. And you had a follow-up, Councilmember? Okay. Councilmember Castellano?
I'll be quick. I think of an overlay as a tool, a tool we don't have thus far. You know, like, we have a hammer, we use hammers all the time in our zoning code, but maybe we don't have a really cool router for a special custom carpentry, you know? And, and maybe sometimes we don't need that router, but every now and again, we're going to make a really cool cabinet with that router that, who knows? You know, we'll get to this later, but maybe it has like some cool regenerative community-building component to it that we, we would have never had before. That's my aspirational self there. That's why I'm excited about it. So that's why I support it.
I just want to say I'm really glad that you used the tool analogy. I kept thinking of hammer and I'm just like, no, it's something more specialized than that. So thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Okay, any further comments? Okay, then we're going to call the question. Let's vote. One last comment, brief. And then we'll call the question.
I'm going to keep us here all night. It's only seven fifty. Okay. My brief comment is, um, I, um, in, frequently we state when we take kind of step one, like, we'll say, you know, thumbs up, we're going to bring something back and we're going to talk about it. We kind of, once something's kind of in the pipeline, we just kind of continue on with it. And so I really do see this as step one of two, and that step two really is to, is to create that overlay for Jacobs. I think that is the intent. And, um, and I understand it, um, but I don't favor it. And so I feel very funny about this tonight because I don't favor step two, which I know is the intent. And this is step one, which I would be okay with if we were just using it broadly. So I'm probably going to vote no, but I wanted to let you know why.
Thank you. So the question's been called. Please vote.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche votes no. Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our capital improvement program with City Engineer Willer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll start, um, while the PowerPoint fires up here. So yeah, tonight I'll be presenting, um, our capital improvement program, 2024. Again, while this, uh, my PowerPoint is loading, I'll, uh, I'll start with thanking a few of the key staff members on our engineering team who helped, uh, put together not only the, the bound CIP document, but then also contributed to the presentation. Uh, we have engineering tech Savannah Andrews. She's been working on revising our, uh, our document, um, almost since last year to make it less, more usable and less buggy. And then we also have, um, admin technician, uh, Latisse Devlin. Uh, she took on the role of putting together the documents and reproducing them. And then Assistant Engineer Albert Figaro, who assisted both Savannah and Latisse in putting it together. So thanks, guys. Tonight, we're going to, uh, talk a little bit, um, start off with an overview here about what a capital improvement program is. I'll, I'll be brief in that section and spend more time talking about our, our completed and current projects. Uh, we have a lot of projects to cover this evening, and so I won't get into the details of all the projects. We have a lot of really great projects that we're in the midst of either completing or we, that we've completed or that we're, are in progress. So I'll just try to touch on those projects to really give you a broad, uh, sense of everything that's going on currently on the capital, uh, infrastructure side. And then I'll jump into finally going through the, the five-year CIP portion where we look at the projects and kind of the planned horizon there will be brief there as well and touch on a couple of key, um, projects back at that section. And with that, we'll, we'll carry on. So a CIP defined is a, a short-term plan which identifies and, um, identifies capital projects and provides a planning schedule and options to finance that plan. So this is really our, our playbook for how we want to move forward with implementing projects. What is the purpose of a CIP? It provides orderly implementation of the goals of the general plan and strategic visioning documents. So it allows us to make sure that all those, uh, goals and standards are being brought into the projects of the city. Um, it provides for orderly and timely basis for sound budget decisions to plan and finance future needs. So we're not just looking at what's right now, but we're looking at, out five years and then also beyond that to anticipate needs and to, so that we're in a position to be able to fund and, and plan for those projects. Um, and it also really allows us to focus on the maintenance or replacement of our, our, our city's infrastructure. As you know, we're a historic city, um, and, and that really is a large driver for a lot of the projects that we contemplate in the CIP. With a historic city comes aging infrastructure. Uh, we have aging roads, we have aging utilities, aging facilities all across the city. And so that's a major, uh, driver for projects in the CIP. Budgets, uh, coupled with, uh, aging infrastructure. If you don't have adequate budgets to address your aging infrastructure, then you end up in a situation where you have deferred maintenance. And, uh, we know that that's not, we're not alone in that. That's something that's across the country, um, across the world, a situation that, um, you know, civilization's dealing with. But it's certainly something that we have in front of us and something that we need to take the time to try to address to our best of our ability to maintain our wonderful city. So with that, I'm going to jump into our completed and in-progress projects. Um, and I wanted to note something as I was going through this and I was being overwhelmed with trying to like, figure out how to present these projects in a timely manner so that we're not all here till midnight and, you know, listen to me blather on. It was like, God, we have so many projects and we like, and so much money here. It's like, and so we, Director Gerving and I like, sat down and we listed them out and it came out to almost a hundred and ten million dollars worth of projects that are in this section for completed and in-progress projects. When you talk about going over a hundred million dollars worth of projects, I don't know. To me, that was pretty shocking. I didn't really realize that until we sat down and looked at it. But, um, it kind of gives you an indication of how much work's going on out there and, and a lot of great projects that are either being completed or that we're anticipating here coming up soon. So with that, I'll get rolling. Completed projects, uh, this is... This is our water improvement projects from 2023. This project looked at installing and replacing valve clusters in our water distribution system in H and I Street and in Old Town ahead of both the multimodal project and the Old Town or the pavement rehab 2023. This is our sewer improvement project from 2022. This project hit a few speed bumps along the way and was closed out this last year, early this last year, but nonetheless, it falls in this category. This project looked at rehabilitating or replacing failing sewer mains in areas of the city, including M Street, 17th Street, Summer Street, and 15th Street. Secondary clarifier maintenance phase two. This is a project down at the Elk River Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is the second phase of maintenance at our clarifiers. This project looked at replacing the launders, launder weers, scum baffles, effluent troughs, screens, scum collectors, pipes and the supports. So basically, a lot of the internal workings that hadn't already been replaced in previous year's projects. So it's a very harsh environment in a wastewater treatment plant and then coupled with being on our coastline, it is very, very harsh. So that this project took care of our clarifiers, hopefully for another 40 years to come. Washington Street Pump Station. This is one of our many pump stations that brings effluent from our collection system into the wastewater treatment plant. These pump stations, which we'll talk a little bit more about later when we come to in-progress projects, are, these are projects that are, sorry, these are stations that where we looked at replacing the pumps and motors and drive shafts and the the high-efficiency variable frequency drives. Motors, pumps here, they're again, almost 40 years old. They were starting to see failures. And in each one of the stations, we had different sorts of failures when it came to the pumps and motors. So this was a time to to take care of that so that we can continue to move that sewer along our waterfront to the wastewater treatment plant. Here's some additional photos of some of the infrastructure that went into it. And then here is some of the new pump and motor down in the dry well in Washington Street. Coast Guard Building Upgrades. This project was to remodel the existing Coast Guard Building into a police substation for the Community Safety Engagement Team, SESET, and the care team. Here's before photo. You see crab pots and pallets. And here you see new accessible entrances, windows. The interior's been updated quite a bit to house these teams. This is a project that has been going on for what seems like maybe six, seven years. This was our Fourth Street Underground District 11. This is a before photo taken where the subway used to be on Fourth Street. But here is the after photo, which was taken this morning. As you can see, you don't really think about it when you drive through there, but the reality is that looks a lot better than it did in the past. So this project is finally, is finally complete and it just took forever, but here we are.
Can I see that before picture one more time? Thank you.
Our next project is a, this was a brownfield site assessment, citywide community site assessment that was through EPA grant. It focused on our waterfront and we looked at sites that had potential for contamination to be in place. We did a phase one and phase two on selected sites. The site that you see to the right of the photo is a couple of parcels that are owned by the City of Eureka that are north of Bay Shore Mall. In this case, we did a phase two here, and then we also looked at some remediation and reuse planning there to look at the potential to use these parcels for sea level rise adaptation or habitat restoration. So through that grant, we were able to get a little bit of a bump ahead on planning in this area, and we also were able to look at a number of other sites along our waterfront. Fiber optic network upgrade phase two. This is a project you may have saw out there along I Street where we installed fiber optic between the high tank facility at Harrison K to the municipal auditorium. This project is intended to provide the backbone for our communication between a lot of our uses, whether that's fire and PD in in future phases or IT and Public Works communications for our infrastructure. This is a EV charging station that was installed on H Street in the last year. This this was a joint project with RCEA where we installed two charging stations and everything. And this is one of our, it's, it's, so there it is. Let's keep moving. Warfinger Parking Lot Improvements. This project looked at including new LID features in the Warfinger Parking Lot to retain and treat stormwater that ran off of that parking lot into the existing planters. So we expanded some of those planters. We dug dug them out, put in material that would help treat the stormwater as well as house plants. Pavement Rehabilitation 2023. This project is our pavement maintenance project for this year. We looked at two areas in particular. We started with Fairway Drive and then we moved down to Old Town. Starting with Fairway Drive, you can see the process started off with clearing the areas adjacent to the roadway to prepare for the next phase of work, which you can see on the right-hand side, which is grinding the existing pavement down to prepare for the overlay to come. Here we see crews on Fairway in a pavement train laying down the asphalt and looks great, doesn't it? And here's the final product, a nice, smooth roadway on Fairway Drive. After that, well, during that, actually, we had crews down in Old Town doing the prep work ahead of the paving. This included doing a lot of work on our storm drain system and also any of the concrete work ahead of getting the paving crews in there to start their demo work. So we had a lot of storm drains that needed some work. We also had curb returns and curb curb ramps that needed work. So all that work got got going ahead of time like it does with many of our projects. Then we got into some of our bigger street repairs. A lot of the streets in Old Town are in have very poor subgrade, so we were able to get down to the bottom of it and kind of build them back up the right way. So that we see here. Here's the next phase, which was, you know, kind of grinding out pavement on some roadways that didn't need to have that full-depth excavation and and rebuild. And then there was also specialty areas in Old Town. There's a lot of concrete and detailed, you know, you know, fancy work down there. So we had to spend more time fixing and repairing some of those concrete areas and to try to really, you know, keep that character that's going on there. It just unfortunately, that sort of work is very time-consuming and takes more time, but it's certainly worth it. And now we'll move on to a different type of project. This is the First Slough Fish Passage Flood Plane Restoration and Coastal Habitat Connectivity Project. This project was funded by the Fisheries Restoration Grant Program. I'll describe what you're seeing on the screen. On the right-hand side, that is the area, it's hard to see, but in the the that's the entrance to Cooper Cooper Gulch Park. The skate park is there and just to the north of that is where you see the beginning of the project where we're looking at realigning the stream channel and including large woody debris through that section as well as doing off-channel rearing habitat and refugia areas. These are all to support bringing, trying to reintroduce fish to the area, in particular salmonids. Heading up from there, along the existing reach, along the backside of the park there, along where the disc golf course is, you'll see some additional large woody debris being will be installed along the creek channel there. And if you jump to the middle of the map at 14th Street, there's going to be a rather large excavation and replacement of an existing, the roadway there to install a 12-foot diameter culvert, which will be fish-passable. So that'll be a big project this summer where we'll have some impacts to access along 14th Street. But in the end, the the goal will be to have what what doesn't exist now, which is a culvert under 14th Street, we can't seem to find one, to have a very large fish-friendly culvert. Upstream from there, additional large woody debris will be in place again for refuge and for grade control. And then at Fort M Street, which is not an open public right-of-way currently, there will be another 10-foot diameter culvert installed there to open up the stream above that. This project is the West Side Flood Reduction and Sea Level Rise Mitigation Project. This project is currently, this project looks at addressing flooding on Washington Street. It also looks at adapting to sea level rise along a number of our stormwater outfalls. Additionally, it looks at providing trash capture devices at those outfalls, which will help us, you know, intercept trash from getting into the bay. Project is funded by a number of grant agencies and is currently in closing in on design. We're pursuing permits and waiting for our funding agency to finish some of their reviews. It's taken a long time. So that project will not go into construction this summer. This will be a project going into construction the following summer. Multimodal modul improvements 2223. So this project includes the work that you've probably seen out there on H and I Streets and then also on Sixth and Seventh. It includes bulbouts, it includes a reduction of lanes on H and I from three lanes in each direction to two lanes in each direction to accommodate a buffered bike lane. In addition, it also includes radar feedback signs and rapid flashing beacons at high-use areas such as near the high school. The project is primarily funded by the Highway Safety Improvement Program, and additionally, the paving work that you saw associated with it was funded by City Measure H dollars. Here's some photos from construction this last fall. And then moving on to our next project, the Annual Lateral Project. This project is a project that is meant to support the city's sewer lateral ordinance where property owners may be required to have their lateral replaced. This, the the lateral program provides them an opportunity to do a fee-in lieu. And if they do that fee-in lieu, that means they can add their project into the city's project. There's a cost benefit for them. It's hopefully provides them a cost savings and then our contractor will go out and actually do the work in the right-of-way and we'll inspect it. Here's that second set of pump station upgrades that I spoke of earlier. Similar photos to see here because the pump stations are very similar and I don't have any up-to-date photos of the other two, but you can, this is, they all look pretty similar when you go down inside the dry well. This project will actually look at two pump stations, Hill Street and McCollum's, and will be under construction this summer. Sorry. Collection System Evaluation 2023. This project stems from the city being sued and being put into a, and a result of that being included in a lawsuit that turned into a consent decree. The consent decree has a requirement that the city do three things to its collection system, has to do closed circuit, television, manhole inspection, and smoke testing. So this project is breaking the city into two parts and looking at doing all those activities. We're completing the first years, that's what this project is completing that first year's work, and next year we'll be looking into the next phase of completing the other second half of the system evaluation. So provide the city with a lot of information on the condition of our collection system and where to focus efforts to for repairs and and to try to limit I and I into our into the collection system. Dyos Park. This project is in going into the construction phase. It was currently or recently bid. This is amazing project where there's improvements to Jacob Peany Field. There's incredible, from what it was existing to what is planned now, the plaza, the parking lot, you know, new restrooms, the the fitness area, play areas. There's a central play area that has, you know, amazing playground structures such as the the EGRET station, EGRET playground equipment that you see here. Additionally, it has a multi-game area that will include roller and street hockey, half-court basketball, full-court basketball, footsaw, and opportunities for art. So a lot of different, really cool things that are going into this, and that construction is scheduled to start this spring. At our water treatment facility, we have a project that will get going this spring to install solar panels. The solar panels will help to offset our energy consumption, both at the water treatment facility, but also at the the Eureka City Zoo, excuse me, the Eureka City Zoo. And that project again will start this spring. Lombard Hills Fire Pump and Backup Generator. This project is to replace our aging diesel fire pump and then to install a permanent backup generator to help support the water pressure in the Lombard Hills area. We have a police and fire backup generator project. This is going to replace the two generators that are provide backup power to the police department and fire department, Fire Station One and and PD. This project is going into construction this spring as well. We've already ordered the generators, transfer switches, and all of that, and so should be getting going soon. Betty's Community Housing Development at the Crowley Site. This project includes constructing pre-manufactured housing units, which will include rooms or dwelling units, kitchens, a kitchen building, a laundry building, shower and restroom buildings. It includes all the underground utilities, water, sewer, electrical, and will be completed this summer. Municipal Auditorium Improvements. This is a grant-funded project that is currently in construction with the following improvements: restroom upgrades, windows, HVAC, paint, electrical, door replacement, ADA improvements, flooring, and roofing. These improvements will help support the Cape Resource Center and offices as well as improvements to the auditorium. Beta Zoo Trail. This project consists of a Class 1 trail, connects to Eureka Waterfront at the, or Eureka Waterfront Trail down by Tid Street and terminates to the south near the Sequoia Park Zoo. In the middle, it connects to the to Zane Middle School, to the Eureka Dog Park, Washington Elementary School, and and provides a lot of connectivity along the city's east side for bicycle and pedestrians. Project is currently in the environmental document phase as well as preliminary design and preliminary right-of-way phase. Some of the components, which we've probably spoken about in the past, includes a roundabout at Myrtle and McFarland, the Class 1 trail approximately two miles, bridges and boardwalks in the section north of Myrtle Avenue, and high-visibility improvements at intersections such as Boone Street and Harris Street. Highland Park Improvements. I wish I had better photos, but when it's done, I'm sure it's going to be amazing. It can't be any worse, right? New restrooms and concessions will be installed or are being distracted currently. The tennis court will be resurfaced and will include area for four tennis courts and additionally, eight pickleball courts. There'll be new playground equipment, new walking trails, new fencing, and it's should be completed in June.
Did you just say new playground equipment?
Yes.
Yes, we did add that to the project, and so there will be new playground equipment installed as well.
Ah, cool.
Automated Meter Read Update. In order to maintain the ability to gather water usage data, this project will replace all of our AMR units citywide, includes replacing, modifying our meter box lids and broken meters. Installation is in action now by the city maintenance staff. Corporation Yard Relocation/Operations Complex. Our existing corp yard is continues to degrade, is in poor condition, is also located in tsunami zone. In order to get it out of the tsunami zone, the city is in the process of purchasing a site and at the same time is in schematic design for the new corp yard operations complex. Samoa Boat Ramp Improvements. Construction of new restroom facilities, two new floating docks for motorized and non-motorized use respectively, three parking lot overlay and restart, parking lot overlay and restyping. It's currently in the design phase. Fisherman's Terminal Fender Pile Replacement. This project will replace failing timber fender piles along the front of the entire wharf and is currently in the design phase and grant-funded. The Samoa Boat Ramp Improvement is also grant-funded. All right, so we made it through that. We're in the downhill slide. We're in the downhill slide. So the seven categories of the CIP, um we've, they're here in front of you and the first one we'll start with is harbor and waterfront. Um, we've talked about a couple of these projects. Um, two that we haven't talked about are dredging the boat basin, um which in Humboldt Bay, it's a, it's a, it's a water body that collects sediment and deposits it and our um boat basin is not immune to that. Um, so we're looking at doing dredging this coming summer in partnership with the um Harbor District. Additionally, uh, the city operates a marine fueling facility at the Commercial Street Dock and that project has failing um underground storage tanks and so we need to um pull those storage tanks out and do above ground storage tanks. So that's what that project entails there. Information Technology Fiber Optic Fiber Optic Network Upgrade. Again, we talked a little bit about the fiber optic project earlier. Uh, this is just continuing phases to connect um city facilities um down the road when funding sources become available. Land and Facilities, we've talked about a couple of these projects already. Um, one that's listed here, um let's see. Is the uh, there's a couple listed here, city all improvements, um the need to replace the um elevator that's out another year. And then you can see the um corp yard relocation operations complex um really coming soon in the next couple of years. So that's a, that project is steaming down, down the road. Parks and Recreation, um these two dollar amounts that you see in the first year here, those are associated with those parks projects we talked about earlier, whether that's Dios or Highland. Um, in addition, the Stream Restoration Fish Passage Project, that category in the CIP, that's the project that's uh that is the first slew fish passage project. So that's what you're seeing there. Um, the zoo master plan, you can still, there's still efforts going in the future to continue to expand um the wonderful facilities at the zoo. And um also continue to look at expanding irrigation at our city parks. I'll touch on a couple here, but a majority of these we've already um talked about. We've talked about our our maintenance projects, which I'll go into a little bit more detail in a moment. Um, the storm drain improvement project you see here, or starting with safety improvement project, that will be next year. That's our C Street, or sorry, that's the Boone Street um safety project. Uh, so that's not this year, but the following year, that's a H SIP funded project. Um, the storm drain improvement project is uh again, that's our West Side project that we talked about earlier. Um, bicycle facilities, um that's planning for um looking for funding in the future. Uh, we have two programmatic projects, sidewalk repair and parking improvements. Those are just to maintain our existing facilities and continue to put dollars towards um upgrading those. Uh, the Beta Zoo Trail we talked about, the electric vehicle charging station project that you see here, I'll talk about in a moment. And then um the C Street Bike Boulevard is also one that's coming soon. Um, in not this coming year, but the year after that, that will be um constructing a bicycle boulevard on C Street between Waterfront Drive and Harris. Briefly, a little bit more on street maintenance. Um, every year, uh, we we invest heavily in the maintenance of our streets and which includes adding in complete streets elements um to each project we look at, we look at opportunities to include, you know, not just paving the street but also what are those things that we can do to support pedestrians, cyclists, um make the streets more um livable and complete. It's always good to kind of look back and see how much we've actually done in the in the near future, in your past, but then also what is, what it looked like earlier. And I know Mayor Burgele um brought up, you know, how in the past we've had limited funds that went towards doing street repairs. And you can see here on the table on the left, um in two thousand seventeen to twenty twenty, we really weren't able to get at a lot of streets due to the funding, the lack of funding. In twenty one, you can really see that influx of funding that came through measure H and you know, you see a list of, you know, fourteen streets that are listed there. So that was a a big influx of dollars and then continuing on each year twenty two twenty three, again, a a large list of streets that were taken on. And twenty three twenty four, we we looked at those earlier um with um Second and Third Street and D through H Street and then of course Fairway Drive. Um, this coming year, we're gonna be looking at Fairfield Street from Henderson to Del Norte, Third Street from L to Myrtle. Myrtle Street from Fifth to Harrison, that'll be a big one. Um, Eight Street from Harris to Oak, so yeah, that's, that'll also be a large project and the last rather large project will be Harris Street from Broadway coming up the hill to California. So that's our suite of uh maintenance projects that were in design currently and getting ready to bid for this coming um construction season. Here's the list of the next four years of projects. I won't go through each one of them in detail, but they are in the CIP. And these project lists are always um subject to report reprioritization based on um a number of things. It could be, you know, findings on some utility conflict or other project that might be crossing over it. Then we might shift them around a little bit there to to make sure that we're not um stepping on our own toes, so to speak. And um I just have a couple more slides and then I'll open it up for questions. Electric Vehicle Charging Stations, you thought we talked about them, but I'm gonna talk about them again. Um, we actually got a grant recently for almost two million dollars um from the uh Federal Highway. It's a Federal Highways Grant to install fourteen uh vehicle charging stations throughout the city at various locations. Um, there's a twenty percent match from the city. But um all in all, it's almost a two point four million dollar project to install these charging stations across the street which will be um a great move forward to providing that um that ability for people to charge their their vehicles. Water Supply, not a lot to write home of here. Um, our annual project will continue to maintain our water system the best we can with the funds we have. Wastewater, there's a couple projects of note here um that we haven't talked about. Um, the first one being our um eliminate bypass project at the wastewater treatment plant. That's the third one from the bottom. Um, that project is currently in design right now. That's a large ticket project. Um, that project is driven by uh regulatory requirements at the treatment plant. Um, that's really changing what we do at the wastewater treatment plant where we no longer are able to bypass secondary treatment. We'll have to fully treat all the wastewater that comes through there, even though these incredible spikes that we get during wet weather events. Um, in order to support that, are we have a de-watering biosolids de-watering project that's also noted here in twenty four twenty five. That project's to help us um deal with the biosolids that are in our facultated sludge lagoons, which we're going to repurpose into a equalization basin to help contain some of that high um high water that comes through wet weather events and then be able to meter it back through the plant in order to get it treated fully. And that's it. The recommendation is there, but um thank you and I'll open up for questions.
Okay, I have two, just real quick ones and then I'll call on you guys. On the fourteenth street, um the culvert that's going in, will there be impacts on to, on the road that was just laid there?
Uh, do you mean impacts as far as traffic?
No, impacts as far as um damaging the new asphalt.
Yeah, there will, there will be, so that whole um area will be repaved. So a lot of that pavement on Fourteenth Street doesn't go all the way to the curbs and we're going to take it from curb to curb away, uh ways up on each hill, cause that entire um crossing will have to be dug out to place that culvert. So yes, that 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 pavement will be taken out, the small section of it and replaced with even more pavement going up. And the sidewalk on the north side will also be replaced, which is in pretty bad shape when you start heading up the hill there on the
Okay, and then my second question, when you were talking about sidewalks, I was curious um how that works and how you prioritize that and just thinking of the ladies that were in the, in the meeting tonight, talking about some things in Old Town. How do you prioritize or put those things down?
Yeah, it's a challenge. We have a little bit of money to try to get at a, you know, a large project. So our large, a lot of um, a lot of um sidewalks that have lips. So our, the the most effective costly way we found to do that was to hire a um a contractor that has the adequate grinding equipment that they can come in and really just like in a couple of days, they can bait pretty much to our entire budget. Which includes mostly, we try to focus on um areas that are city responsible first, where we have responsibility for street tree uplift and that sort of thing where it's our, our responsibility where is um for the, for the residents of Eureka, they may have um their own, the sidewalk in front of their house, that might be their responsibility to take care of. So we try to focus on city, um city facilities first that have issues um with that money so that we're, make sure we're taking care of those. And then we, again, we try to use a consultant that really has the ability to come in and cover as much area as possible quickly. Um, they also have, can deal with the um, the grinding, like the um, the, the dust and everything that comes off when you're doing grinding like that.
Okay, thank you, and then Councilmember Fernandez.
Thank you, uh, yeah, very similar to uh some of the mayor's concerns. First, how do we, how do we determine for for the streets, uh, the priority for reconstruction? You know, for instance, you have year one Fairfield, Third Street, et cetera, and then year two, you've got other streets. So how do we make that determination as a city?
Sure, um, first, we focus on streets that have the most impact to the most users. So those are gonna be our principal arterials. That's why you'll see very highly um used streets listed on there for the most part. Um, and then when it comes to prioritizing, sometimes we need to look at a project here and try to fit projects together that are geographically close together. Sometimes we don't do that depending on what the construction method is. Um, but primarily it's use and then we also try to add in um overlays and residential areas to try to maintain some of that pavement before it gets too bad where you need to come in and do a more expensive uh treatment in order to repair it.
Right, because I'm sure you're hearing some of the same about potholes this winter and such and so that kind of goes into this as well. How do we make that determination uh as, as these are coming to fruition with many holes and having to patch with coal, so.
So prioritizing pothole patching?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's um, it's something that we're, that it's, it's challenging because there's, there are so many potholes across the entire city and it's been one of those years where there's been, you know, we're already over our, you know, average annual rainfall for the year. So it, that that makes it even more challenging. So it's really, you know, as calls in, um taking those calls, making sure that the crews are getting allocated, putting it on their list of things to do. Um, but it really makes it challenging when you don't have weather to be able to go put out hot mix on the ground when it rains day after day after day. You can't go put hot mix down when it's raining like that because it's just, you you're wasting your money. And to put cold patch in, you've probably seen it, it's like you put cold patch in, somebody drives over and it pops out. We try to keep up on that, but it, it's really challenging from that standpoint. So hopefully now going into a drying, um a drying uh period. As Mayor Bagel brought up earlier, you know, we're really trying to put an effort to try to put as, uh, you know, as much tonnage as we can out there to make repairs on those potholes now that we have the weather to do it.
Alright, thank you. And then uh for the storm drain improvements, uh, it's, it's similar. How are you prioritizing because it particularly says, you know, here's the list, but it's not prioritized. So how are you making that determination moving forward?
Um, storm drain is a bit different in that um when it comes to our funding for storm drain, it's very minimal. Um, and we try to go after larger projects like we have with the West Side project where we can actually try to address um using grant funds, the larger um portions of the city and really take on as much as we can with that. Um, and then it's on a case by case basis, um when it, you know, like how when it comes to a, a maintenance operation, that's one thing, you know, can we get the crews in there to to vac out a, a, a cross culvert or an inlet, you know, we do that, you know, as soon as we can get them available to do that. Um, when it comes to actually having to repair those things, again, you're waiting for weather and then you're trying to, trying to align it with a project. If we can align it with one of our maintenance projects, that's the best way to get a contractor on board and get good prices to make a repair like that. But yeah, it's certainly a challenge, especially in a year like this year.
Right, and and you had said, uh, just, just a little back there for a moment that uh you there's not a lot of funding in terms of uh our city budget and so we try to rely on grants for that. Is there a matching mechanism for that? Can we use measure H funds to try and match or I don't know how those particular grants work, so.
Yeah, the majority of the grants that are out there, they're difficult to say like, oh, we need you to go fix a culvert. If you can, if you're trying to get at a multi benefit type project that meets a granting agency's desires, like you're doing an LID feature or you're doing some sort of water quality or you're doing these other things, then often you can address those. And uh, so you have to really try to fit, you know, a situation like that into a funding um group. So that can be pretty challenging to do, but it's certainly something we look at, especially with like the West Side project. We tried to do that the best we could.
Okay, so we gotta be a little creative with some of those grants, or some of those applications, okay.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer.
I just want to uh, City Engineer Will, I want to thank staff for, for all the hard work on the report and just putting together all these projects, right? I mean, a hundred and ten million dollars worth of work is pretty, I hope people are paying attention and I also, you kind of jumped, I have written down here old infrastructure, like people, it's not just roads, it's our buildings, it's our amphitheater, it's everything, right? I mean, we're an old city and we're happy about that, we're a historic city, but it costs a lot of money to run a city and to, to all the upkeep and we're finally, you know, no uh hard feelings on previous, you know, city councils from years and years ago, but stuff didn't get done. And so thank you for, for making it get done, helping it get done. Um, I did have a question about the solar, how many megawatts are we looking at? Just guess?
I don't know, honestly.
A lot.
Sorry, I can get back to you on that.
Okay, no, I was just curious, I mean, like, is it gonna power our facilities, you know, in a day? Or is it something like, you know, fifty percent of our power use?
It, it was, yeah, they're designed to take on the full um capacity or to offset our use at the water treatment facility. It's really tied to the property and we were able, because we had a city facility that was connected through the right away, we were able to also bring the zoo into that. So between those two uses, we were able to uh fully offset the uses of both those facilities.
Alright, thank you.
Councilmember Molton, I think I saw your hand up.
I did, thank you, and thank you for bringing this, that was all very concise. I love the capital improvement plan, it just feels like this is what we're doing. Quick question, you mentioned building um car charging, electric car charging stations. Uh, who's, who are those for?
Yeah, those are um public facilities. So those would be facilities that are be located in a public right away, whether that's in a city parking lot or um on the street. They'll be for uh the public's use, similar to the one there on H Street between Third and Fourth.
And how does that work? I mean, obviously you plug in the car, but do they pay for it?
Yeah, so the, we, we, we work with RCA in order to put these projects together because we're not really wanting to get into the business of operating um EV charging stations at this point from the standpoint of like taking the money and doing and and maintaining that side of things. So we work with RCA, we take on the project in our right away. We are, you know, a lead in the grant, we actually go out and you, we take the contract, we put the con, you know, we have the contractor and we build the project and then they take over once it's completed, operating the facility and uh maintaining a lot of the facility as well. Unless there's like some major issue with like the parking area or or some of those things.
I was just curious if, if charging for the charging uh offsets the cost?
I don't know that. And it would probably be overtime eventually, but and and how rates change, you know, the, the rates it seems like are changing quite a bit as well. So I don't, I don't know how to answer that exactly.
Okay, they pay somebody, we're just not sure if it's us.
Well, yeah, you have to, yeah, you have to pay for the use of the site and the power. So there's a meter that has to be installed, so PG has to drop a meter there. And then, you know, there's RCA is the, the one who has the, the um, the account for that meter, I think. And then they um are the ones who deal with the money. It's not a, my understanding is not really a high, it's not for like a profit, it's, you know, really to provide a service.
Yeah, and I think the, the grant funding pays for the construction of it and the, the cost charged to the public for it pays for the operation and maintenance and pays for what RCA does. We don't make any money off it or anything.
Okay, so the construction was covered by the grant, thank you. Uh, one other question. Oh, I wrote cash lagoons, okay, so we get um we get a bunch of storm water and it comes in through I and I, uh huh, which is not, thank you. So water is getting into the, the sewage treatment where it shouldn't be and it overflows things. And so we're gonna empty the sludge out of some ponds so that when it overflows, we're gonna put untreated sewage into open ponds before it can go through the sewage treatment plant. I'm sure that this is being done in a way that's very responsible, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it because it seems like up to this point, everything that was not treated would be in a closed pipe until it got to the part where it gets that one very stinky grate over at Public Works.
Yeah, so no, I, I certainly did not provide a lot of detail with each one of these projects, so it's a good question. Yeah, so we have, you know, our wastewater is collecting our collection system. It gets uh transported to the Elk River Wastewater Treatment Plant. Uh, the Elk River Wastewater Treatment Plant is comprised of a primary, uh, there's primary clarifiers, um, there's a headworks grit chamber or a grit removal device, there's a primary clarifiers, there's secondary clarifiers, there's trickling filters, um, there's facultated sludge lagoon. There's facultated sludge lagoons, those are, and then a basin after chlorination before it gets pumped out. So those are all open air facilities. This would take one of the two facultated sludge lagoons we have, one that currently hold sludge that's a byproduct of the treatment process. And we would move down to just operating with one facultated sludge lagoon, which we can do. And it would allow us to store 10 million approximately or up to 10 million gallons of effluent, primary treated effluent, so it'd be treated primarily, and then it would go to the equalization basin where we can hold it and then bring it back through our system, our secondary portion, secondary treatment portion of the system to be fully treated before it's discharged.
So we'll go through one, the the first clarifying step and then, okay, we're in the weeds now, but I was curious about that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Castellano?
Sure, just a quick question. With the electric vehicle charging stations, I know, I think all of them that the city has installed thus far have been the Smart Point or whatever those are. Are there any plans to include Tesla charging stations as well?
We haven't got that far into it. I don't believe so, but right now, we just had our first kickoff meeting with the funding agency like today. So it's a very new grant and we're just getting started with it. But I think it would be probably similar to what we have now when it comes to the type of facility that would go into the in through the grant.
But correct me if I'm wrong, City Engineer Willer, but we have level twos right now and these will include level threes with fast charging stations, some of them?
I wish I could answer that question right now.
It's okay, we can come back to it.
Come back and present the grant to you if you like. That's 100%. We, it's a new thing, so we wanted to bring it up here and it's exciting.
Yeah, I I have some thoughts on that, but I'll share those for after.
Thanks. Okay, any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone from the audience who would care to share on this item? Seeing no one, we'll bring it to Zoom. Colin?
Good evening again. Wanted to just bring up two items very briefly. One is to thank the mayor for bringing up the issue of sidewalks and just to say that, you know, an uneven sidewalk or, you know, particularly large cracks or bumps can actually be dangerous for some people, particularly for people using wheelchairs or people using strollers who might have to detour into the road or might not be able to pass. So it would be great to figure out a way to divert some additional funding for for sidewalk repair. And then also, my second comment relates to the street maintenance program. And just to remind the city that there is an adopted complete streets policy and it would be great to explore more how that will be implemented with regards to those maintenance projects so that we can get better infrastructure for biking and walking and and just general safety infrastructure implemented whenever we're doing repaving project. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Do you see anyone else, Shannon?
I see no one else.
Okay, so seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for a motion and comments. Councilmember Moulton?
I move that we receive a report and adopt the City of Eureka Capital Improvement Plan 2024.
Second.
I think that was hot on the seconds tonight.
That's who I heard, but. Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Castellano? Time for comments.
Thanks. Thank you for all of this work. This is a huge effort. And I know many staff members participated in it, so thanks to the whole team. I just do want to encourage when we get to the planning phase for electric vehicle infrastructure, some access for Tesla vehicles. Just because many tourists do drive in those up and down the coast. And so I would love for people to have an opportunity to park in Old Town or park in Henderson Center and walk around and do some shopping for a few hours while their car charged. So I just want to put that out there because those are some of the longer distance vehicles. And I don't think it was really clear, you know, we're adopting this plan and so for the public, please come back for the budgeting part where we we kind of get into the the way this plan will actually be implemented as part of the budget process. That's all.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councilmember Bauer? Oh, he forgot what he's gonna say. No further comments? Oh, there we go.
No, I I did have something. It took me a second because you were mentioning the electric charging and I was thinking, one of the things for us to fully electrify our fleet, and I mean, our our personal vehicles, city vehicles, it requires 9,000 charging stations in Humboldt County. So we got a long ways to go. We need to put in as many as we can, totally support as many charging stations as we can get. And then what's my second? Oh, you know, when it comes to us, I mean, we're spending our money, you know, Measure H funds to to redo our roads. I really want for us to think about in in the public, really, you know, how we can capture some of those state tax, those those gas fund taxes, because we get a very small percentage of what is billions of dollars. And I think that's kind of an effort that we need to undertake is that the real engines of of our commerce, you know, of our communities are our cities. And those roads deserve more more attention, more care, more love than they get. And so I think that's something that we need to figure out here and and in the public. Drive through LA right now and every freeway is under construction. It's great, totally understand that, but the cities need more. And so, you know, if we can match 2.5 million with 2.5 million of of state funds, you know, we'd be paving a lot more roads. So just something for us to think about in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments? Well, I too, this is the most exciting thing. I love the CIP. I love looking at how we're going to fix our streets. It's so important. So I really appreciate your appreciate your presentation and good things are happening in our city. I just love that. So please vote.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Thanks again. And that moves us to future agenda items. What happened? Oh.
I have a future agenda.
Oh, you have a future agenda item. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I was thinking about our power. So one of the, there's many options when you, when you're buying your power through hopefully Redwood Coast Energy Authority, you can select different options of of renewable, where your power is coming from. And I'd like for the city to explore that the kind of the highest tier is Repower Plus. It's 100% renewable. It's it's the top of the line and it's, it helps us achieve our climate, our climate goals, right? To talk about in strategic planning. So I'd like for us, I'll say this, it will cost a little bit more money, but, you know, we talk about trying to drive change in our community. And I'd like for us to explore whether we can feasibly pay for, I don't think it's a ton of money, but Repower Plus as our, you know, portfolio of energy.
Future.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on to the city manager reports. City Manager Slattery?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and council. Before I introduce our guest tonight, who is so patiently waiting and is more informed about capital improvements than I think he'd ever want to be. But before that, tomorrow night, just a reminder, strategic visioning update at 4:30. Here in council chambers, the public is also welcome to come. So with that, we have Executive Director of Humboldt Bay, Nick Bound Crawford, here to give update on this year's events and explain his fascination with road repair.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me. I'm really happy and excited to be wearing this hat. I wear a couple of different hats, but this one's not disaster related, so it's kind of going into the fun summer period. But really excited to announce, you know, we're doing Friday Night Markets again this year. And kind of the same size, a little bit shorter in duration. Four months was a bit of a test run last year and it just about ate me alive personally. So this is going to be nice, kind of going back to three months. We're going to kick off on May 31st. And that's a combination kickoff. We're going to pair up with the Forest Moon Festival, which kicks off that night, too. So we'll have a big kind of combo launch and it'll be a really fun time. Last year, we hit record figures with Friday Night Market. We had over 100,000 cumulative attendees throughout the summer, which officially makes us the largest community event north of San Francisco, which is pretty impressive. We also had, we hired 60 local bands, which is a lot to coordinate, and 250 local vendors. All of these vendors, most of them don't have brick and mortar stores, most of them are startups. So this is a really great opportunity for them to have a consistent week after week, direct to consumer experience and to kind of get their, get their businesses off the ground. We had a great partnership with the Inc. people last year that we're hoping to do again this year. We dedicated the Romano, Romano Gabriel Stage Area to the Dreammaker participants. And so looking forward to doing that again this year and we'll have two other stages. And then we'll continue our efforts this year. All of our volunteer core at Friday Night Markets, we partner with the Eureka Mission. And so the residents of the Eureka Mission work with us all summer to put on this amazing event. So doing that again this year. So any volunteer that you see out there, you know, they're just, they're enjoying themselves and we operate those markets. It's myself and about six other volunteers. So it's a, it's a pretty big undertaking. The biggest kind of, you know, the partner that we have in Friday Night Markets is the City of Eureka. And just like super grateful for that partnership that we're continuing to do. Just about every department's involved. Public Works in closing the roads and helping us out with our traffic planning, stuff like that. Public Safety is a big one, so we have officers down there. It's a great chance for them to just kind of like interact with the community. And so we see a lot of really great kind of just friendly interactions going on. The Visitor Center, especially since they moved over to the gazebo, they were a massive partner with us last year, stayed open really late and just had a, they kind of became our headquarters. The Economic Development Department is a huge help with us, too, and Eureka Main Street. So we're just, we're really stoked about this year and Forest Moon Festival. So with Friday Night Market, we just opened up all of our vendor applications today and we saw a pretty big flood of them come in. So we're looking for a ton of vendors. We have a lot of space to work with. Forest Moon Festival also is accepting vendors. Their vendors, applications are at forestmoonfestival.org. And Friday Night Market is at fridaynight.market. And that is about all I have on that. But there's a lot more coming out and you'll be hearing a lot of radio ads with lots of information. And there's a couple of other events around town that we're partnering up with, too. And we will continue our partnerships with local nonprofits on a weekly basis as well.
Wonderful. Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Moulton?
I don't have a question so much as a comment. I run a business in Old Town and we see a spike in foot traffic right before Friday Night Market. So I don't know if that kind of anecdotal stuff gets back to you, but folks are walking to the market and they're walking past my business to do it. And I'm just delighted to see something that is really, it seems to draw out more locals than anybody else and just to have it be something that people really like to do from Eureka and they're walking down there and stuffing their faces and dancing their feet off. And it's lovely to see. Thank you for doing it.
Awesome. We do kind of, on that note, like, it really does, so we have the beauty of tracking kind of our digital impressions based on the advertisements and all of the social media efforts that we do. So last year, we had about 1.6 million digital impressions for all of the posts that we were putting out and all of the activity that we had. And we started kind of doing some attendee surveying and that we see a ton of attendees that are coming all the way from Reading on a Friday and Crescent City. And so just about every town in Humboldt attends the market. So we have attendees from just all over the place. So it's a really great opportunity just for people to come down to Eureka and Old Town and just kind of walk around and in the streets and be around the community.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I just want to encourage us once again to cosplay for Forest Moon Festival.
Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you for all of your efforts for the community and, you know, in this regard, and of course, through Code Ad and and all of the other things you're working on, Nick. I don't know if you've heard yet, but the, but Eureka Main Street is working on some incentive programs to help support people who are visiting outdoor events to come to local businesses, kind of exploring the idea of a wooden nickel, kind of, you know, you get a wooden nickel. Anyway, it's not fully developed yet, but it'll be exciting, I think, to work with you to create even more opportunities to kind of just support that robust and cohesive connection between, you know, outdoor events and local businesses. So thanks so much.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, that kind of program is great to, you know, kind of start up and run through Friday Night Markets because you have a really hefty population kind of hitting Old Town all at once. And in response to Councilmembers Fernandez's comment about cosplaying, just keep in mind, do it within the IP regulations of Lucasfilm and those can be found on forestmoonfestival.org.
Great.
I was told to say that.
That's very funny. Okay, well, thank you for your dedication to all things good in our region. I appreciate you so much.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks for being here. Okay, and with that, we'll move on to council reports. But before we do that, I forgot one announcement in my mayor's report. So there's so much to talk about. But this is exciting, you guys. So May is, May is Mental Health Month. And so this year, as a kickoff for May is Mental Health Month, we are going to partner with NAMI, the Department of Health and Human Services and the Mayor's Initiative on Mental Health, to bring you a day called Embracing Humanity of Mental Health. We are going to have a professional panel. We're going to have a lived experience panel. And then we're actually bringing a speaker from Canada, Skid Row's CEO Joe Roberts. He's a keynote. He's amazing. I have his book. He's incredible. That's happening May 4th. It's happening right here at City Hall. It was going to be at the Warfinger, so please note that the venue has changed. It's 10 to 3:30 and we look forward to seeing all of you. And there will be Zoom available as well. We'll be getting information out as we go, but I just want to really encourage people, you know, mental health is a critical piece of a healthy community and I would love for anybody and everybody to come down and really get educated on some of the things that that we can do to support people and and even ourselves. So with that, we're going to have council reports and we'll start with Council, Councilmember Castellano.
Okay. Let's see. I I traveled to Burbank for the Cal Cities HC Housing, Community and Economic Development Policy Committee. And just to report, there are two items that that committee decided on. One was supporting expedited permitting for health clinics in cities where those are absent or or there's, there's not enough of them. And the other one, and so the committee voted affirmatively on that. And the other one was kind of principally permitting thrift stores and the committee voted negatively on that and felt that cities still needed to be able to have jurisdiction if they wanted. There's a nuance around it. I won't get into all the details right here, but just that, you know, cities can have some decision making around that in terms of how they're implemented within cities. I attended the Community Safety Meeting that Eureka Main Street put on, so thank you to Amanda for that. And to EPD as well. Yeah, thank you so much. I think the community really really appreciated it. And it's for sure, you know, part of an ongoing process. I attended Senator McGuire's Town Hall, the Eureka Main Street Meeting. And I did go to Sacramento, not on city related business, but I was just there supporting some actions that Redwood Coast Regional Center is supporting at the state level. Because there are so many people with disabilities who are thriving in our community because of the work of that organization. I am hosting a town hall on April 30th here at Council Chambers. I am hosting a town hall on April thirtieth here at Council Chambers. And I'm it's not fully formed, but what I'm thinking about are opportunities for neighborhoods to build connectivity with people who live in their neighborhoods. And so kind of thinking about strategies for that and maybe even getting some, my ideal world, like some some people who who want to take on some kind of fun neighborhood actions. So that's what I'm thinking about and I will pass.
The time on that.
In the evening, because I work for the town hall.
Yeah.
Yeah, like five thirty, five thirty, five thirty. Does that work?
Anytime works for us on the thirtieth.
We'll say five thirty.
Great, thanks so much. Councilmember Molton.
All right, thank you. I don't have any travel to report. Since the last meeting, I attended a Eureka City Schools two by two. Lots of great stuff going on over there. I just really appreciate, I mentioned it last time, but I just really appreciate their attempts to create a well-rounded student. Their Portrait of a Graduate has really really polished and really just presents this person who's ready for the modern world and they're going to start working on Portrait of an Educator next to look like what what sort of principles underpin the kind of educator that the that the students and the community want to see working in Eureka City Schools. I'm looking forward to Arts Live this weekend, as always, super fun. Looking forward to the JPA meeting and the Chamber two by two before my next meeting. And in I'm looking forward outside of Council Two, participating in the Forest Moon Festival as an Old Town business. And I recommend folks who can to do that because it can be free to participate, find something to do that follows the rules and get some free advertising dollars and tourists in your business and have some fun with the sci-fi nerds. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just as Councilmember Castellano had attended the Legislative Conference put on by the California League of Cities, I also attended as a member of the Government Transparency and Labor Relations Committee. There were topics about AI, Brown Act compliance and public record requests, all interesting. And the main piece of legislation that we discussed regarding divestment did not make it out of committee. Was a little disheartened last week to hear about the vandalism that took place at Carson Park. I am glad to hear that it's being investigated. RDEC was coun was canceled just last week as well, the Redwood Region Economic Development Committee. So I'm sure the April agenda will be very robust. Also, like Councilmember Molton, we had a meeting, a two by two with the Eureka City Schools representatives where we discussed the Jacobs property and what an overlay means. And I know we didn't discuss this at the meeting, but the Eureka High students are performing Spamalot this weekend and next weekend at seven thirty and they're doing a matinee on April seventh on Sunday. So I'm very fascinated by it because it's not only high school students, but I hear they did some audition calls for middle schoolers as well. So should be very entertaining, fifteen for general, ten dollars for students. Hope to see some of you there. We had a two by two, the the mayor and myself, with the Wiat tribe representatives. Sad to hear that Chair Ted Hernandez is stepping down at the end of the month, but appreciate that he'll continue to work with the tribe. We discussed we discussed their project plans for Fifth and D and then the potential for an elder tribes dinner in the next year. And then like several other folks just across the county attended the town hall hosted by Senator McGuire with what felt like guest lecturers, Mayor Burgel and Supervisor Arroyo. He had an answer for everything. So thank you very much for representing us the way you did.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, I was also in Burbank. I served on the Environmental Quality Committee for Cal Cities and we spent two hours debating one bill, Senate Bill nineteen ninety-nine, which failed. And that's basically all the power companies are looking to create a flat rate in your bill and they want it to be quite large. And so we spent two hours, basically. And there's a the Senate Bill nineteen ninety-nine by Erwin would would make the rate much lower. And so it's a long explanation I don't need to get into, but it's worth checking out if you're interested to see whether it's something that we should support. And then I also attended the McGuire Town Hall and I just thought it was, he did have an answer for everything. And, you know, he's really done a lot for the community here. Great Redwood Trails come in, you know, talked about mental health and and he did a great job, too, Mayor. Thank you very much for representing us. It was a great event. Also, RCA, we had a board meeting, what was that, last week? And then Cooper Gulch, we had a cleanup day, which was very fun. I want to thank Pack Out Green Team, Cal Poly, Natural Resources Club and all the the community members that came. I think we had roughly forty or fifty total. We, you know, there wasn't much trash, which was awesome to not fill a dumpster for once. Cooper Gulch is really clean. We worked on invasive species. It was a great time. And thinking of maybe trying to do another one in May, so I'll 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 talk to Robin about it before I before I plan that. And then lastly, probably going to do a Betazoo Community for Betazoo Trail Community Forum in the next month or two to just talk about what the plans are. Been getting a lot of community members that are affected by it, reaching out. So hope to have something, something maybe around Zane Middle School or something and and talk about it in the future. So look for that coming soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Conchera Stiloche.
Yeah, so mine's going to be kind of some things over the course of a month because, of course, I missed last or the last council meeting because I had COVID. So I also was supposed to go to Burbank, but I missed that trip because I tested positive for COVID two days before it, so I didn't end up going. But I appreciate that they sent us all the materials and everything so that I could actually read everything and find out what had happened and what everybody discussed. And I think the one thing that I wanted to make sure that I told you about as a council was that the Legislative Analyst Office is projecting now a seventy-three billion dollar deficit for California, so I think that's important. And how California is addressing that is delays, deferrals, program reductions and fund shifts. And so that means like if it was something that was going to be paid out over like a year or two, it may be paid out over three to five or, you know, longer. Some reduction, some programs will be cut back, some funds will be shifted from some places to others, meaning that some things will be defunded, for lack of a better way to put it, or delays. So they might have said, you know, we're going to do this now, but you won't get it for however many years. So what is not being discussed is any kind of reduction to like promises that are already out there yet. And mainly it's going to affect and that why this affects us is it'll mostly affect Health and Human Services and Education are the two really biggest ones that are going to be impacted and for communities like ours, that could potentially really, we could really feel that. So just wanted to report on that. I did get to go to the, I don't know what we're calling it, the Wind Energy Conference. I did get to go to that. I went to the dinner with our city manager and then I went the next day and it was really nice to kind of hear everybody's ideas and get to sit through that presentation. Mayor Burgel was there, too, and I thought it was just very informative. And if you haven't gotten to see Chris Mickelson and Rob Holman talk about this and see Rob's presentation, that is really worth watching and looking at his. It is really interesting. I don't, you know, I'm learning. I attended a Measure Z thing like weeks ago. I got to do a ride along with one of our EPD officers. It was interesting and impressive. I got to do it with Officer Couch and just a really excellent professional, really kind to everybody he interacted with. He would calm people down when they were really stressed. I was just very impressed and I his favorite thing to do is find stolen vehicles and he found one very quickly. So that was also interesting. So I went to the public safety. I don't know if that's what we are calling it. We're Officer LaFrance. Did his presentation and they talked with our business owners in Old Town and Downtown and that I thought that was really helpful, really good. I got to also attend Senator McGuire's Town Hall. And I, you know, really appreciated our mayor's presentation and the stuff that she talked about there. And I was like, you need to talk about this here because it was really good and I just thought very informative and helpful. Of course Supervisor Arroyo was there as well and that was nice. Senator McGuire, so impressed with him. It was so nice to actually get to chat with him for a few minutes. And I talked, I brought something to his attention about something that's happening with our children here locally and something that needs to change, like in our county. And he was like, what? Wow. And he's like, let's get together. We're going to talk about this. And then they reached out to talk with me more about it and I was like, okay, I really appreciate this. We just have a little wonky law in our county that needs to be changed. And it's just three counties in the whole state that do this one weird thing. They don't name safely surrendered children. And I don't know if you guys know, but my youngest child that I adopted is a safely surrendered child and he had no name until he was adopted legally. He had a number. And there's just a handful of counties that do this very stupid thing and ours is one of them. And so I said, can we please change this? Let's find a way to fix this, please, so these children have a name. So anyway, just wanted to say that mainly because I feel like when a public official is receptive to something and they're like, how do we fix this? I feel like that should be talked about because the criticism is what's always talked about, right? I also got to meet, my mind is right, Congressman Huffman. I thought he was really nice. We also got to meet Assemblyman Gibson, who was great and fun and came to our Wind Conference, very knowledgeable, great presentation. So and I've got the Chamber two by two coming up and I think that's everything.
Well, thanks, everybody, for hanging in. This meeting is adjourned.